Ladies and gentlemen, I call this meeting of the city council to order. Please note that pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations of the number of people that may gather in one place, as well as Mayor Cradatoni's declaration of emergency on March 15th, 2020, this meeting of the city council will be conducted via remote participation. We will post an audio recording, audio/video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the City of Somerville website and local cable access government channels. Now, please rise for the, uh, yes, please rise for a prayer and pledge allegiance.
Mr. President, we'll begin this meeting with a prayer. God grant this city council the serenity to accept the things that cannot be changed, the courage to change the things that can be changed, and the wisdom to know the difference. And now let's join in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
This is roll call. Councillor Klingon. Councillor Mba.
Present.
Councillor White.
Here.
Councillor Ballantyne. Councillor Ballantyne. Councillor Strezzo. Councillor Niedergang.
Here.
Councillor Davis.
Here.
Councillor Scott.
Present.
Councillor Ewan Campen.
Here.
Councillor Rosetti.
Present.
And Councillor McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. President, we have 10 councillors present, one is absent, we have a quorum.
Do we have any moments of silence? I see Councillor Ewan Campen and Councillor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, tonight, I ask that we remember George Pierce, who was a longtime librarian in the Somerville Public Libraries. I'd like to share a statement from the library director, Kathy Piantagini, who wrote, "George began his career at the Somerville Public Library as a part-time page in 1968 at the tender age of 18. He became part of the full-time staff in 1972, and to say that George represented the heart and soul of how we approach library service in Somerville is not an overstatement. He is remembered by library staff as a person who loved his job, his family, music, fast cars, and a good IPA. He was a prankster, he always enjoyed a good laugh, thoroughly enjoyed his interactions with his coworkers and with the public, and he is going to be missed terribly. How fortunate we are to have had his service for more than 50 years." And I'd additionally just like to share a couple notes that Kathy received from library patrons when she shared this news. "I had hoped to see George's smiling face and watch him as he helped so many new to the library visitors become active members. He leaves a gaping hole in all of our lives. He was such a kind man, very funny, and always forgave my library fines. My family is shocked and shattered by this. George was a cornerstone of the library and one of the reasons that we loved going. I personally loved talking music with him. His knowledge of rock and blues was truly endless. George was a great friend. He will be missed." And the last one I'll share, although there are many more. My son had his last day of school, he popped over to the library, sorry, my son had his last normal day of school. He popped over to the library and had a nice conversation with him. I'm glad he has that memory. I ask that we keep George in our thoughts tonight.
Everyone, please mute your, uh, your mics unless you're speaking. Councillor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we please remember this evening Carol Florence Atherton. She passed away back on May 10th up in her, at her home in Maine. Carol was originally from Somerville. Her daughter Nicole still lives here with her husband Greg Gorman. And so, you know, she attended Northeastern University. She worked as a fire alarm operator here in Somerville until her retirement for many, many years for the Somerville Fire Department. She was a loving mother and grandmother to seven grandchildren who she adored. Carol was survived by her daughters Nicole, her husband Greg, Amy Barone, her husband Nick Barone, her grandchildren Taylor, Emily, Nick, Abby, Jared, Kylie, and Logan, and her sister Geraldine Falvey and nephew Sean Falvey. So I just, uh, I just ask that we remember her this evening.
Please let our good show, Councillor Ballantyne is in attendance and has a moment of silence.
Thank you. I'd like to remember that 29 Somerville residents today who have passed of COVID-19, they were daughters, sons, mothers, fathers, grandfathers, aunts and uncles, and friends and neighbors in our community. I express my heartfelt condolences to their family and friends who missed them.
Do we have any further moments of silence?
Mr. President?
Councillor.
Thank you, sir. Just so you're aware, once again, I do not have the chat screen, so I may have to just announce myself when I need to be heard. I would ask that we please also remember this evening Warren Fensel of Somerville, who passed away peacefully on June 3rd. He was the cherished son of the late Ida and Charles Fensel, beloved brother of the late Helen Nash, Evelyn Bagwell, Theodore Fensel, and Ida Mae Fensel. Warren, as we all know, was the past commander times three, a gold life member, captain of post honor guard, color guard of the American Legion Post 19, past chef de gar, Middlesex County Vautier 41, a life member of the James A. Logan VFW Post 6800, DAV Chapter 27, Sampson Air Force Base Veterans Association, National Rifle Association, AF Communicators and Air Traffic Controllers Association, and retired enlisted veteran after 22 years of service in the United States Air Force during the Korean Conflict and the Vietnam War. Retired lieutenant and former range master armor of Federal Reserve Bank Police Department and former deputy chief of the Somerville Auxiliary Police. Many of us know and knew Warren for all the years of him being at the Memorial Day early morning ceremonies. I don't think he ever missed a one. And I am sad for his passing. I am grateful that I got to know him in my life. I ask that we please remember him this evening.
Councillor Ballantyne and myself would like to sign on to that. Any further moments of silence? If there are no further moments of silence, please rise for a moment of silence. Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Item number three is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 14th.
Seeing no discussion, the item is laid on the table. All right, so before, before we move forward, I understand there's a lot of people in attendance, and some councillors want to sponsor speakers, so I'd like to take a number of items out of order if I, if you could entertain me for a moment. I'd like to take up every, all police-related items, starting with number seven and 78, and then we'll take the other, all police items. I could read our numbers out, but basically every police item we'll take up, and then we go into our public hearings for utilities, and then there's a couple items for city staff. Does anyone have any objection to taking these items out of order? Hearing no objection, this does require a roll call vote. So, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
It's a roll call vote on taking items out of order as described by the president. On that item, Councillor Klingon.
Yes.
Councillor Mba.
Yes.
Councillor White.
Yes.
Councillor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Councillor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councillor Niedergang.
Yes.
Councillor Davis.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Councillor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Councillor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 members voted in favor. That motion has been approved.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please read item number seven.
Mr. President, item number seven is a resolution submitted by City Councillor McLaughlin and the mayor, as well as councillors Rosetti, Mba, Strezzo, Niedergang, White, and Ballantyne, supporting full implementation of body worn cameras by sworn personnel in the police department.
All right, so this is a resolution I submitted with the mayor, but before I or any of the councillors speak on it, I believe Councillor Scott has a resident that he would like to sponsor for speaking. Is that correct, Mr. Scott?
Uh, yes, it is. I was contacted by a great many people about this resolution, but in particular, I'd like to sponsor Willie Burnley Jr. to speak, to address the council on it tonight.
Okay. Any objection to allowing, Mr. Berger, you said?
Burnley.
Yep. Seeing no objection, give me a moment to search through the crowd and find them. Here we go, Willie Burnley. Mr. Burnley, you have the floor.
Thank you, councillor. My name is Willie, and I'm a black organizer and resident of Somerville. I, like millions of others, have taken to the streets to demand justice for George Floyd and the countless of other black and brown folks who've been murdered, brutalized, or unjustly incarcerated by our racist criminal justice system, which police officers uphold. And I'm here to say that this resolution to support body cams for a police force that has resisted that call for more than five years is not justice. It is not what we marched for, it is not what more than 3,000 of my neighbors called for when we signed a petition to defund the Somerville Police and refund the people. I've watched too many killer cops remain on the streets after brutalizing or murdering people that look like me on body cam footage to believe that it could ever mean hope for my community. We know that body cams are not transparent. Cops simply turn them off or deny requests for their footage, such as the BPD did just recently after WGBH requested footage of protests where they used tear gas. Implementing body cams for Somerville PD would mean giving more money to the police for the illusion of safety for white residents of this city. Nothing better illustrates this point than the cruel irony that the Minneapolis Police Department, the same malignant force that murdered George Floyd, reported last year that nearly all of their officers had body cams. Being on camera did not save George Floyd's life. What do I care if a cop kills me with a body cam on or not? We want to stop police violence before it starts. We have to stop expecting the police to police themselves and start changing the material conditions and the response mechanisms that make mobilizing a lethally armed force seemingly necessary to begin with. As someone who has already once been economically displaced from this city due to the rising cost of rents, I find it appalling that the city can propose allocating more than $17 million to the police and approximately 1/24 of that to housing stability. When people of color recently called for more youth jobs at the Just Us Somerville vigil that I attended during this economic crisis, the city is only offering 1/23 of what they're giving to the police department to economic development. In the midst of a global pandemic, the Health and Human Services budget is a fifth of what the police department is being equipped with to threaten community members with incarceration or death. Somerville must heed the national call to transform how it sees community safety by changing the material conditions the community faces, alleviating poverty, and ending the threat of state sanctioned violence. We know the healthiest, strongest, safest communities are not the ones with the most police officers. They are the ones with the most resources invested in the people. Believing Black Lives Matter means more than symbolism and good intentions, it means taking actions to defend our lives by moving away from marginalized violence inherent in this current system. If you actually believe in the values of this movement and an inclusive democracy, you will do as the more than 3,000 Somerville residents have petition to do and defund the police and reallocate that budget, or a great sum of it, into rental and housing assistance, mobile crisis units for those suffering from mental health crises, youth jobs, paying the Somerville teachers more, and, and investing in the health and economic well-being of community members of color. Good day. Black Lives Matter.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion from members of the council? Hearing no discussion, I'll just come, my, my, Councillor Scott and then Councillor Ballantyne. And Strzok, well, Councillor Strezzo first, I'm sorry, and then Councillor Scott and Councillor Ballantyne.
Mr. Perry, first, thank you very, thank you, Mr. President. And Mr. Perry, thank you very much for your testimony. I hear you. Oh, hold on one second, where's my camera? There. The reason that, because when, when this, when this order came up, I'm sorry, this resolution came up, I spent, I researched, 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 does this work? Does this work? Does this work? Can this work? What is the best solution? And what, what I concluded is that it, that body cams, and the reason I signed on to this, and I, I called public defenders, public defenders of color, the reason I signed on to this is because that, because there was a order put in to, within all citizens' review board, the police, community police review board that is also on this agenda tonight, because I, I figured coupled with the body cams, if there, if we have an independent review board that will examine this, that this can work. And if it's the difference between my daughter, um, between hearsay and not, that it's, that this can be a valuable service to our community, including Christian Cooper, who, if, in, in Central Park, our bird watcher, had he not, had he not been recording what he was experiencing, he might be in, in jail. And I want to talk, I, I think that the police oversight, citizen-led, completely appointed citizen-led, coupled with this, can help our community. Um, that's, I think, I, and, and you know what? Penalties for body cams or officers who do not, who turn their, to turn their body cams off. I want to explore that option, too. And do any other councillors have, have any ideas of that? If we, can we impose strict penalties for officers that turn their body cams off during the, during shift? Thank you.
We have Councillor Scott, Ballantyne, and Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Mr. Burnley said it very eloquently and very powerfully. I won't rehash the testimony, which I'm grateful for, but it is in line with, with a great deal of the input that came to me and also that I solicited from, from members of the community. And I just, I, I think in this moment, body cameras are not the best use of our money. I appreciate the perhaps well-meaning of the mayor, but this wasn't a solution that's been asked for by the, by the community, as far as I can tell, and I, I unfortunately won't be supporting this resolution this evening. Thank you very much.
Councillor Ballantyne, Davis, and Mba.
Thank you, Mr. President. What I would like is that there's no vote taken on this and that it gets referred to committee for discussion. I appreciate the testimony. I have spent some time also talking to Congresswoman Presley's office in the last couple of days, and I guess my, my biggest concern, which I had expressed to you, is the, the storage of data and potentially the conflict that this might have in terms of the ordinance we wrote on facial recognition. So I think that we should just have a discussion. I don't think we should vote on it this evening, and I welcome, you know, any further input from, from anybody in the community when we talk about it in committee. Thank you.
As a last, another councillor calls for a vote, it's my intention to refer this to committee. So we have Councillor Davis, Mba, and then Councillor Niedergang.
Thank you, Mr. President. A portion of my statement was going to be recapping part of a conversation I had with Councillor, with Councillor Mba, so I'd be happy to defer to him if he'd like to speak first.
Councillor Mba, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I'd sign on this, but I'm open to, like, really clear, you know, conversation because I know that it is pretty clear that the structure of policing needs to change. And when, when I signed on this order, I, as I'm thinking about evaluating the police budget, I thought maybe, you know, like, part of the money that will come for these body cameras will still come from the police budget, you know? I did not, wasn't thinking that is some new revenue that will be brought in. And secondly, I also still think on, unless proven otherwise, you know, like, body cameras are necessary, it depends on the mechanics, you know, of how it's being used. So we have an, you know, a system that we are trying to create that will oversee, you know, all this in terms of maneuvering and stuff like that. So yes, I'm open to conversation, to learn more about like how everything will shake out, but I think, like I said, and I've said it multiple times, you know, George Floyd's murder was captured because he's dead, you know? It drew attention because his death was captured on video. So that is to tell you to the extent that technology, you know, has helped to brought this thing to light. If it wasn't captured on video, it would not have been making the news. So let's not lose sight here, you know? Again, I'm, you know, I want to have a healthy conversation around all this topic, but that is why I signed on, onto this resolution, because I think that fundamentally is key, you know? And it's an evidence that you can use and then prosecute somebody, but other than that, it's just, I said, or he said, or unless somebody else, a passerby captures something on, on video before, you know, somebody is held accountable. If I thought they didn't hold him accountable, I'll leave it at that for now, because we have subsequent conversation on other related issues down the road. Thank you, Mr. President.
We have Councillor Davis and then Niedergang.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councillor Mba. I'll be brief. I, I agree in principle with Councillor Mba's position. I didn't sign on because I felt the wording of this was a little too immediate and a little too, you know, urgent. I think that the, many of our colleagues' comments can be summed up as saying that body cams might work in the right circumstances. I don't think we're there yet, and I think we have a, a number of other, more pressing needs that we should be focusing both resources, or resources financially and bandwidth time on. So that's why I didn't sign on to this, but to be clear, I, I absolutely, I've heard other leaders of color call for implementation of body cams. I recognize the, you know, potential value there, but I fully agree it has to be done right. I see it as not a neither/or, but a both and. Thank you.
Councillor Niedergang.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for bringing this resolution. I fully support it. I am ready to vote on it now. This is not a panacea, it is not the answer to the police issues in our city or nationally, but it is a major step forward. It's something that the city's been working towards for five years. As the resolution says, "Significant evidence exists that body worn cameras on sworn police personnel are a critical tool that increases transparency and accountability of policing and preserve important records." This will not solve the problem in and of itself, but it is one of a number of steps that I hope we will take, and I support it, and I think we should go forward with it. Please note, the Somerville Police Employees Association, the Patrol Officers Union have been fighting this for five years. Why do you think they've been fighting it? They do not want to be, they do not want the accountability that body cameras would, would create. So I, I hope that, I'm not going to try to force a vote if people don't want to vote on this now, but I hope that the administration and the council can move forward on implementing this as part of next year's, this coming year's budget. Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, I'll just weigh in very quickly. I think, so what the speaker said, something that I very much agree with, is that this doesn't go far enough, and it was never my, this is the silver bullet that's going to solve all policing issues in America and in Somerville. But it is something that I've been advocating for since I've been in office since 2014. I had a woman of color in my community who works for a conservative organization known as the ACLU, who asked me to pursue this, and I investigated it, and I felt that it was a good use of money and time back in 2014. I will acknowledge it's 2020 now, situation has changed, expectations have changed, I understand that, but if we can't get even the most basic concepts like body cameras, I'm just, I'll take everything and anything I can get to advance this cause, to increase transparency, and hopefully reduce police violence, but it is not a, it is not a end-all of anything. I do agree, I've heard that financial concerns, which I definitely understand, back when I entered, back when I supported this in 2014, there was funding from the federal government available from another conservative bulwark named Barack Obama, who had grant money for all police departments across the country that we could, could have utilized if, as Councillor Niedergang pointed out, the police union didn't fight us on that. I hope that money's still there, and I hope the current president didn't eliminate that ending, because he's probably not a supporter of this concept either, but unless somebody, so that, that's how I feel. This is not an end-all, this is not, hey, we're doing body cameras and nothing more, there's clearly so much more that needs to be done, and we're going to be examining the budget this year and looking at how we spend our money. So unless someone calls for a vote, I will refer this to the Equity Committee. Do I hear a call for a vote? Hearing no calls for votes, this item will be referred to the Equity Committee. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, should we be moving to item number 78? Was that the next item you want to consider?
Next item, number 78, please.
Item number 78, Mr. President, is a communication that's been received by approximately 3,380 citizens who have all submitted comments regarding the redistribution of police department funding.
Councillor Ewan Campen.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So since May 25th, when George Floyd was killed, we have seen a level of protest and direct action and political pressure around issues of racism on policing that is truly unprecedented in my lifetime. This is true across the country, and it is true in Somerville. We have seen an enormous outpouring from our residents. We have had protests and vigils. All of us have received hundreds of emails calling for specific policing reforms for, for what they're called defunding, reallocating police budget towards other community needs. We have seen the launch of an entirely new citywide organization led by people of color called Just Us Somerville, that there is an agenda item later on that speaks to, that has already released a specific list of demands. And the, the item before us now is a petition that was gathered that has over 3,000 signatures that is calling on us to look for ways to reallocate money from our police budget and invest it into things that get at root causes of, of public health and safety, things like education, housing, other community services, you know? I'll defer. You know, I'll defer to councillor White. This is more signatures than I have ever seen on a petition on any topic in any, during my time as a city councillor. And before I sponsor two brief speakers, I just want to say that despite the horrifying and traumatic circumstances that we are in, I am also incredibly inspired by the amount of response that we are seeing. This petition and all of the various ways that our community is bringing organized pressure on all of us who hold elective power in this city. If you take a look at tonight's agenda, there are dozens of items from all of my colleagues. If you look at the recent announcement from the mayor's office, I think that there are signs that this pressure has already begun to work. I think that there is reason for hope from all of this pressure, and I know for myself, and I believe I speak for everyone in this council, that we are committed to taking this work on and having this be just the beginning of a broad and inclusive process around that. So I'd like to sponsor a brief statement from two of the organizers who brought this petition, Catherine Anderson and Matthew Kennedy, Mr. President.
All right, councillor Ba, I see you want to comment. Do you want to comment now or wait until after the speakers?
Mr. President, I can wait.
Okay. Councillor Ewan Campbell requests to sponsor two speakers. Are there any objections? Hearing none. Could you give me the names again, councillor Ewan Campbell?
Catherine Anderson is first, and second is Matthew Kennedy. Catherine with a K.
Catherine Anderson, you are unmuted, and I'll get Matthew in a second.
Thank you. Good evening, city councillors and everyone listening in. My name's Catherine Anderson. I live at 28 Warren Ave in the Third Ward. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today on the petition entitled "Fund Public Services Before Police." By friends and I wrote this petition in response to ongoing uprisings across the nation demanding fundamental changes to our society that will guarantee that Black Lives Matter. This is not the first time we've come to the city to discuss the problem of policing in Somerville. Last fall, a mutual aid agreement with the city of Boston sent Somerville police to the straight pride parade counter protest. A letter regarding the ensuing police brutality committed by members of that mutual aid agreement received 117 signatures. This was followed by hearings and then promised action from the mayor. This time, we submit to the city council, at the time of submission, 3,164 signatures. That count is now closer to 3,800, verified to the best of our abilities. These signatures come alongside ongoing organizing efforts to make sure that Somerville residents are not only safe from the reactive harms of overpolicing, but to make sure that we have the resources to proactively build the community we deserve. In their endorsement of our petition, Mamas, a local mutual aid network that has been created in response to the coronavirus crisis, states that we need a different model of community safety and security, one that thrives on care, not suspicion, and one that ensures safety by meeting needs, not by threatening violence. As the city council and the mayor are well aware, our community's needs have grown with the coronavirus crisis. A potential wave of evictions looms ahead in August. Gentrification has driven out many of the city and forced others into precarious housing situations. Our paraprofessionals can't afford to live in the city where they work with the students that they love. Each of these crises impacts marginalized residents at a greater rate, and each of these crises requires resources to provide true public safety. This body has considered shifting funds from policing to public services in the past. Councillor Mark Niedergang proposed a $600,000 cut last year with $160,000 ultimately passing. Recently, councillor Umbo has spoken passionately about the need to move funds to the services our neighbors deserve. Budgets provide a unique opportunity to make a concrete statement of values. We can choose to fund armed police, or we can choose to fund the resources we know address the issues our community face. Each dollar spent on policing is a dollar that is not spent on addiction and recovery resources, housing resources, educational resources, mental health resources, and the other pressing needs of our community members. Now is the time for Somerville to make a stand for our Black, Brown, and Indigenous residents and lead the way for our region. Now is the time for Somerville to remember that our most pressing problems cannot be solved at gunpoint, that they require imagination and care and funding that this council and the mayor have the means and the responsibility to provide. Over 3,000 of our community members won't wait to see what choice the city council and mayor make. We will actively organize to ensure we build the community we deserve, a community where Black lives matter. Matthew Kennedy will be speaking to some of these resources and the world we have to build. Thank you.
Hi. So I'm Matthew Kennedy from Ward 6. And so over the past two weeks, there's been a lot of confusion over what it really means to defund the police. As I present this petition with over 3,300 signatures from Somerville residents, I'd like to share my own interpretation of a phrase. Most of what the average person knows about policing is based on popular myths about the role it serves to the public. We're told that the police make our community safer, and that they primarily target "bad people." But decades of research prove otherwise. Although there are individual instances one can highlight in which a police officer saves a life, the majority of the occupation involved antagonizing working-class people to protect the property of the wealthy. I see calls to defund police as the first step to the complete abolition of police. I'm not interested in minor technocratic changes. Better changes, but, sorry, better training, body cameras, and de-escalation techniques have all been tried and have failed. The whole system has to go. It may sound like a new radical idea, but abolitionists have been theorizing on how a post-police, post-prison world will look like for many years. Thankfully, a collective of prison abolitionists have provided some specific example of major systemic changes that could be implemented in Somerville and nationwide right away. For more information, you can search Google for "A to abolition," and I'll read some of the suggestions right now. Reject any proposed expansion to police budgets. No hiring of new officers or replacement of fired or resigned officers. Fully cut funding for public relations. Until the police are fully defunded, make police union contract negotiation public. Demand the highest budget cuts per year until they slash police budgets to zero. Prohibit city candidates from taking money from police unions and stop accepting union funds. Require police, not cities, to be liable for misconduct and violent settlements. Abolish asset forfeiture program laws. Suspend the use of paid administrative leave for cops under investigation. Remove cops from all reentry and shelter institutions. What should the money cut from policing be used for instead? Promote neighborhood councils and representative bodies within municipal decision-making. Invest in multilingual resources for immigrant and asylum-taken communities. Assess community needs and invest in community-based resources, including groups from tenant unions to local shop owners and street vendors, prioritizing those from marginalized groups. Invest in community-based public safety approaches, including non-carceral violence, prevention and intervention programs, and skills-based education on bystander intervention, consent and boundaries, and healthy relationships. Cancel rent without burden of repayment during COVID-19. Repurpose empty buildings, houses, apartments, and hotels to house people experiencing homelessness. Prohibit evictions. Make public housing accessible to everyone. Repealing discriminatory law, barring people from accessing resources based on income, race, gender, sexuality, immigration status, or history of incarceration. Support and promote the existence of community land trust for Black and historically displaced communities. There are lots of other changes we can make, but I'll stop here for a bit of time. Google "A to abolition," and thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. On the communication, I have councillor Ba and then councillor Rossetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the recognition. Thank you, Matthew. Thank you, Catherine, and thank you for everyone that signed on the petition as well. Also, I think I've never seen anything like this. As one of the signatories to the petition, you know, I want to let everybody know that what attracted me, that spoke to my issues, was the paraprofessionals, you know, that was made up largely of women of color in the city. So I just want to let you guys know that that, there's been funds that have been allocated to pay the paraprofessionals a living wage. So if you didn't know, that is a big win for us, a big win, you know, so you can celebrate that. And then I also want to make sure that, you know, and make it clear that whether or not we agree with the title, you know, of "Defund the Police" or "Abolish the Police," is just branding. You know, it is clear that the structure of policing needs to change, because for so long, you know, we have tolerated and funded, you know, encouraged a war on crime that makes cops the warrior and our neighbors the enemy. So it is clear that it has to stop, and we must now start working for our neighbors. So police, you know, hold the lives of citizens in their hands. So they are accountable, just as doctors, accountable, you know, like, for their patients. So I just want to give you guys a shout-out again for that, you know, having the courage to, like, bring attention, you know, to some of these issues. So I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councillor Rossetti.
Mr. President, thank you. I'll be extremely brief. I appreciate anybody who wants to give us input on important decisions such as what is before, will be coming before us, but just want to be sure that the public is clear on the matter of budget and the power that this body has on budget when the budget is presented to us, and it hasn't yet been presented because of the COVID times every community is in. But we may be, we'll be talking about it later on. We may be hearing from the administration in budget presentation by the end of next week. The only power our body has is to cut the budget, not to add. We, if there are enough votes, sufficient votes, certain portions of the budget can be cut. But as far as cutting from one department and creating monies into another, we don't have that power to do that, and especially because we'll be doing budget in a not as long a time as we have normally had in the past. So I just want the public to be clear on that. It doesn't mean this body can't aggressively work towards creating something that we hope the administration will create and add into the budget, but that probably wouldn't happen until sometime maybe mid-year if there was money to transfer in from free cash perchance if we wanted to create something new. So I just want the public to be clear on that. If we can take money away, but we cannot transfer it into another line. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll also be very brief. Thank you so much to the speakers and for everyone who signed on and the hundreds of emails that we've received. I, just to echo what councillor Ba said, this is a complicated process, and, you know, no matter how you, what you specifically mean when you say "defund," it's clear that we need to do, we need to make all kinds of deep structural changes. I call, and to echo what councillor Rossetti said, I call on the administration to look at the money, just as Somerville has called for defunding the cadet program and the police in schools program, which is the name that is escaping me at the moment. I call on the administration to look for funds that can be, that are currently allocated to the police department and look for immediate areas that could be existing programs that could have increased funding, that could help prevent the types of situations that are currently addressed by police through calls. And then, secondarily, this needs to be a long-term process. We need to have a conversation with the community. We need to hear from experts, from other members of the community, from our leaders of color, and reimagine how we respond to issues, moving from broken window policing to safety-first response, healthcare responders, addiction treatment, as others have said. That is clearly the wave of the future. It's in every conversation that I've heard around the country and every article or journal article that I've read, and I fully support that. And I look forward to hopefully having the cooperation of the administration, because as councillor Rossetti said, in order to get the second piece, we need them to work with us on it. Thank you.
Councillor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very brief, while I also have great admiration for the engagement of people at this moment. I just wanted to emphasize, to councillor Rossetti's point, that the budget that will be presented with at this point on the 19th of June for our review has not been presented yet. The mayor can still make a different choice, and even after it has been presented to us, if we do make substantial cuts as a city council to the police department, without further submission by the mayor, it would simply result in a decrease in tax levy, and it will be incumbent on the mayor to respond to these demands and to this clarion call, which he can do with the resubmission of a modified budget, which funds all of the social services that are being called for. So I just want to make it very clear, to emphasize that point, that it's not that nothing can be done. Something can be done if the executive acts with clarity and speed. Thank you.
Any further discussion on those items? Hearing no further discussion, this item will be referred to the...
Mr. President?
Councillor Valentine, is that you?
Yeah, I'm sorry, my chat is just frozen. It's not working. So if I could just add a comment to what's been discussed, to build on what councillor Rossetti is saying, just to the audience. First of all, thank you so much for everybody for speaking, but in terms of the budget, if you think of an Excel spreadsheet and the rows across there, we call those line items, if you look at the budget, and we go through the budget, line item by line item. So that's row by row. And we can cut a line item, but that means then that if we cut that, we can't, as councillor Rossetti said, reallocate that someplace else. It's just that that line item is taken out, and then it's up to the department or the administration to figure out how they want to reappropriate the money. So if we're saying we don't want an allocation for body cameras, and we cut that line item out, that row out of the budget, so it's reduced by, let's say, $500,000, the administration could still, they take $500,000 off, but the administration could still decide, well, they do want to add body cameras in there, they're just going to take $500,000 away from crossing guards or something like that. So I just wanted to clarify, you know, how the budget works, and I look forward, if anybody has any questions, to certainly walk you through that, but there will be a buzz presentation on Friday, June 19. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the item? Hearing no further discussion, the item will be referred to the Equity Committee. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, moving then to the other items that are related to policing matters.
Yes, please. Item number eight, I believe, is next.
Item number eight is an order submitted by councillor McGlaughlin, Ewan Campbell, and Clingan to the chief of police prohibit the purchase and use of military technology and eliminate any military stockpiles that the department currently has.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'll speak first, and if other people wish to speak, please let me know. This is an important one for me, in particular, and one that I want to be on record supporting. I know the mayor is already making moves to address this, and the Somerville Police Department, and I might talk with them, emphasize the lack of a lot of military equipment, but it's something that should be investigated. Before I say anything, I have to, I have to acknowledge the positive changes that I have seen within the police department within my lifetime and within the six years that I've been on this council. I grew up in the city, and, oh, yes, I grew up in the city fearing police. I grew up with friends, people of color who feared the police, and did not see them as allies. And over the years, I have to give credit to the mayor and to the police about a lot of the positive changes that have happened. So a lot of the demands people are making are things that have happened, and there's a number of petitions out there. So I can't, I have to acknowledge the positive things that have happened. But one of the things I've seen over my years nationwide is just the military escalation of police. I remember going to a football game and seeing people dressed in military attire with machine guns, and I was in the military myself, and I see tanks when the Marathon bombing happened. You see tanks in the streets during protests. You see people wearing all-black paramilitary attire, and it does not send them... the message that I would like to see. And it is very concerning to see the militarization of police nationwide. So it is something that I would like to see happen, you know. The other thing I'd add, as someone who served in the military and has been familiar with a lot of military equipment, there's really, there's always this urge to use the equipment that you have. So the best thing to do is to not have this equipment. I don't view it as a public safety issue to not have this equipment, and I would like to investigate this further, but I see several counselors would like to comment. I see Counselor Scott, Counselor Davis would like to sign on, and then Counselor Ballantyne would like to sign on. So Counselor Scott, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for bringing this important resolution. I would also, you know, not to create another roll call vote, but I'd simply like to say that it's important that we have an accounting of what kind of military hardware, military grade hardware that we have on hand, including, you know, tear gas launchers. So there is a lot of equipment, though, that isn't, and this is the point that I think is really important to get, there's a lot of equipment that isn't necessarily owned by the city but is accessible by the city. Our membership in NIMLEC, which is a regional law enforcement collective, gives the city access to military grade hardware that people really couldn't even imagine. That's where they keep the tanks. And City of Summerville is a NIMLEC member community. So even with this resolution, were it passed and somehow come into law or come into effect, the fact is that the specter of tanks on our street crewed by or armored vehicles crewed by Summerville Police and being deployed against our residents is one that is absolutely still a possibility, thanks to our continued participation in NIMLEC. So I very much appreciate this resolution and I would also like to sign on to it, but I will be bringing future items to ensure that it's not just what we have in our own lockers, but the broader agreements that we have in place that welcome that kind of that kind of ordinance into our city. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Scott would like to sign on and I would, I think I'm going to send this to your Finance Committee, Counselor Scott, so you could do all the digging you need. Does that sound good?
Mr. President.
Counselor Ba, you have the floor. And Counselor White would like to sign on.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, for putting this forward. I also would like to sign on. I just want to say that this is also where, you know, the resource that was used to purchase this can go to marginalized communities that have been targeted, you know. So this is really how we can, you know, sorry, allocating some of the resources to meet community needs. Thank you, Mr. President, for putting this forward. Again, I'd like to say.
Counselor Ba and Strazza would like to sign on. Any further discussion? And Counselor Rosetti, I believe that's the entire council. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to appreciate what you said at the beginning of your remarks in terms of the improvement of the Summerville Police Department. I didn't grow up here, but I have been here since 1975, and I did work in the Summerville Police Department from 1995 through 1998, and there's been a tremendous improvement and change, which doesn't mean that there isn't still very far to go, but we should acknowledge progress that has been made. I have submitted two related orders to this, which I would ask that the council allow to be read. One is a late order asking that all military equipment that the police department has be disclosed, and another one is Order Number 81, which is about a specific piece of military equipment that that there are public records that show that the department has. So I'd ask that those two be read and taken along with item number eight. Thank you.
Okay, so we have two items. You have those, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Clerk, you there?
Mr. President, I have the items ready to go. The first is item number 81, which is an order submitted by Counselor Niedergang that the chief of police verify whether the Marshall Project websites report that the police department received 26 5 and 1/2 millimeter rifles worth $4,200 from the federal government is accurate, whether those rifles are currently in the department's possession and what their purpose and potential use is. And then on the late item, this was submitted today by Counselor Niedergang, that the chief of police reported to this council in writing no later than June 18th, a description of any military equipment either purchased or received as a federal grant currently in the possession of the police department.
Counselor Niedergang.
Thank you. Yes, I would like those to be considered along with item eight. I think that the council and the public deserve a full accounting of whatever military equipment the police department currently has. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the three items before us? Counselor Ballantyne would like to sign on to number 81 and the late item. Any further discussion? Here are no further discussion. These items will be laid on the table and referred to the Finance Committee.
Then, Mr. President, we return to item number 12, which is the next item regarding police matters. It's an order submitted by Counselor Davis, Niedergang, Ewan Campen, Strazza, Rosetti, Mba, and Ballantyne that this council draft an ordinance to establish a use-of-force policy applicable to municipal law enforcement agencies.
On the item.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Let's Counselor Davis.
Yep, thank you, Mr. President. So this is relatively straightforward. It's just to be clear for folks, so, you know, I started putting this together, actually as you can see from the source, useofforceproject.org, that has, I believe, since I put this together, has been sort of rebranded as the Eight Can't Wait. These are the eight policies that should be, and I'm not sure whether there's a ninth like one there, but there's only eight policies that that should be contained within use of force policies in police departments. This is one of those many little things that we can do now while also doing and working on the big things. So to be clear, this is another not, you know, not this or that, but, you know, both and. I ordered these because in the reverse order of effectiveness, according to data and studies that have been done that are available on Use of Force Project and also on Campaign Zero website, policies that have these, Use of Force Policies that have these components, data has shown that an actual reduction in violent episodes. So there is some data that backs this up. After I submitted this, the mayor announced, released a press release saying that we already do some of these things and the ones that we don't, we're going to do. That's great. I'm looking for an analysis of the extent to which our current policies that I have gone through it. You know, there's some nuances, a lot of nuance in these things, of course. And to echo what the President said, it is a good thing that our police department does already have a use-of-force policy and that that use-of-force policy does touch on some of these items. And that's great and there to be commended for that. And what I hope this this resolution will bring about is an improvement in that. And what I'd like to see happen is that to the extent that we are able, that we ordain the requirements of the use of force policy with with this guidance. And of course, as with all of this, I anticipate this will go into committee and we'll have a legislative process to to make sure that we're looking at the right specific, the right items, that we're wording them the right way, and, you know, obviously go through that that process. So that was the intent of this. I don't think there's a whole lot of discussion, but of course, I'll value the input of my colleagues. But the idea was to make sure that we, as the council, are ordaining these things that data proves make things a little better, and it's one of the things that we that we ought to do to to make sure that we improve this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Klingon, White, and Ba would like to sign on, and I will myself as well. Is there any further discussion on this item? Here are no further discussion. This item will be laid on the table and referred to the Legislative Matters Committee.
Item number 14 is a resolution submitted by Counselor Mba, Scott, Davis, Ewan Campen, Strazza, Rosetti, and Ballantyne, calling on this council to create a police commission and a community police review agency.
Counselor Ba.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the recognition. You know, the last several weeks and months has shown that police violence and brutality against Black and Brown Americans is a product of systemic racism, including structural failures in which enforcement agencies are organized. So this is time when we need to ask ourselves what public safety means and whether our laws and budget reflect those priorities. So this is a demand that is coming from me, from Black and Brown community leaders, and I think it is time for us to get this done now ASAP. So I would yield to Counselor Davis and Counselor Scott.
On the item, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Ba, for for your leadership on this. Together with Counselor Scott, we put an immense amount of time putting this together with input from local leaders of color and as well as folks nationally. And Counselor Scott, we'll talk a little bit more about that. Folks from the Justice Collaborative helped advise us on this, as did some constituents who helped with the research. There's many, many hours of research that went into this, and it's not just the three of us who submitted it who did that work. So thank you to everyone who had a hand in it. This is another thing that is, isn't, you know, this isn't the silver bullet. This is a small thing that we should do, that we really ought to do because, as, for example, Counselor Strazza mentioned in her comments about body worn cameras, that if a true civilian review board and police commission were in place, that might be a scenario where we can get body cameras right. And the item that I just discussed, a use-of-force policy, I would love to see oversight of the use-of-force policy being handled not by the city council but by a properly formatted, structured, and empowered civilian review board, police commission, as we've contemplated here. This is, this is not a new idea, as many as many of you likely know. Civilian review boards and the like go back many years and there's a long, probably an infinite list of failures. And if there's one common thread in the reading and the research that I did, that I've done over the past however many days and weeks, it's that when these things fail, when they don't work, it's because they don't have the proper power. So this needs to be structured right. It needs to be constituted properly. It needs to be given actual authority, and it needs to be the product of a community process, not, in my opinion, as the mayor has proposed, the product of a process led by an outside counselor, an outside consultant. I think this is, this is a legislative matter. This is a process that we, as the legislative branch of the government, can lead, and we will be taking that lead from our leaders of color and and experts who have looked into these issues for years and can speak to the state of the art. And with that, Mr. President, I'd like to yield to Counselor Scott.
Counselor White would like to sign on and request it to be signed on to all the police items. So same as Counselor Klingon, and then I have Counselor Scott to comment, Counselor Strazza, and then Counselor Scott, Strazza, and Niedergang. So you have the floor, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to thank Counselor Mba for his leadership on this and and also to echo my thanks to the people of color, both in Summerville and really across the country, who engaged with us to provide a response that speaks directly to the demands made by people of color here in Summerville. This was one of the very clear demands of the Just Us Summerville Rally that was so moving this weekend. And the work that went into this really cannot be overstated, dozens and dozens of hours, bringing together the women of color, people of color who have been working on this exact thing, organizing around this for decades. I want to be clear, while this is not radical reform, it is also not new territory. These are known best practices and we can name them. We can call them out and we can expand them. This resolution before us tonight is not a finished ordinance. It is not a, it is not anything more than a simple acceptance of our responsibility as a legislator body to engage with our constituents, to do the work of listening to them, bring them into the conversation, following their lead, but also a recognition that it's our responsibility to end up crafting an ordinance that is the best in the country in the way that we have as a body on facial surveillance, on numerous issues, to be honest with you. I'm very proud of this body and I'm very proud of the dedication to it. And I'd like to point out that these, the body of this resolution really speaks to, as one of our colleagues famously said, the minimally satisfactory version of what can be done. The work continues. Even since submitting this, we continue to get information, research, offers of assistance from all over the country, from POC-led organizations who see an opportunity here for Summerville to truly lead the way and set an example that communities all over this country can follow. So I look forward to this being a really engaged process, both in a committee of the city council and also in the neighborhoods, in our listening sessions, in the ways that we do the active outreach that I'm proud to say Counselor Davis, Counselor Mba, and in whatever small manner myself have done in the last week and change to bring in those voices that aren't normally heard in this chamber and have them shape the results that happen. So I think this is, I'm very proud of the work that's been done so far and also very excited about the work that is still to come. Thank you very much for all of my colleagues who have signed on their support here and look forward to continuing the work.
Counselor Strazza and Counselor Niedergang.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to thank my colleagues for putting this forward and for your work on this. I'm proud to sign on. I see this as one step of many steps and that I want to make sure this is a community process and I want to make sure that that this is an independent commission and community police review agency. I think that we have to do this right. We have to do this right. This is for our community. We want to include our community as much as possible in every step of this. That's all I have to say, and thank you.
Counselor Niedergang.
Thank you, Mr. President. I pretty much agree with everything that's been said, except I don't think the council should vote on this resolution tonight, and I'll tell you why. This is an important resolution. There's been a lot of excellent work put into it. There are excellent ideas in here for how to structure a police commission and a community police review agency. I've read through this resolution about a dozen times, and I very much support it in concept, and I will do everything I can to help develop legislation that implements the intent of this resolution. However, I can't vote for this resolution now. It's not that I object to any specific aspect of it, it's rather that I do not think the council should go on record supporting a particular detailed prescription and solution at the very beginning of the discussion of a challenging and controversial issue. I personally do not feel well enough informed to vote now for the very specific detail and concrete components of how these two bodies should be structured. The resolution makes determinations about the relative powers of the mayor, the police chief, and these two boards, and about other very specific issues. How can we support all these very specific provisions even before any public discussion with each other, the mayor, the solicitor's office, and the chief of police? There needs to be extensive discussion in a public venue before the council votes on something like this. It should be a basic principle of our work for the council to support detailed and controversial for the council not to support detailed and controversial legislation before it has even been discussed. However, I do want this resolution to pass, and I do want to begin working on creating these two boards as soon as possible. So if people do want to vote on it, I would propose an amendment I would propose an amendment, which rather than having resolves that essentially declare that the council supports specific pieces that should be in legislation, recommends those resolves. So I will leave it up to you, Mr. President. I'll propose my amendment to change some of the language from resolve to recommend. I think these are great ideas. I just don't feel that we have done the work yet to be able to vote in favor of them and declare that they are what we want to put into place. So I'll ask that this be treated as the body camera item has been treated and not voted on tonight, sent to committee, where I look forward to working on it with extreme urgency. Thank you.
So as is processed, any counselor can call to make a vote or an amendment. I have not heard that call yet, so I will go to Counselor Mba, and then Counselor Strezzo, and Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counselor Nita Gang. I have one question for Counselor Nita Gang then before I make, you know, say what I want to say. And when, I don't know when is the right time. First, I'm ready to vote on it tonight, but I want to ask Counselor Nita Gang, did you talk to any community member of color about this?
Thanks for the question. No, I haven't. I've only spoken to you, Counselor Davis, and Counselor Scott about it. You were the sponsors of the amendment, and I contacted you about it, and nobody has contacted me.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm glad that Counselor Nita Gang hasn't. And so I just, you know, want to ask Counselor Nita Gang, if, I just want to be sure, if you're really proposing to ignore, you know, the only Black voice on the city council, you know? Which, when I speak about the issue that affect me and Black and Brown and their need, like, are you trying, are you proposing to ignore that?
Mr. President, can I respond?
You can respond, but I'd rather not. I'd rather keep this about the item at hand than people's personal preferences, but please respond.
So is the president, can I call for a vote right now?
Counselor Nita Gang has the floor, but I will turn the floor back over to you if you so desire to call for a vote. But Counselor Nita Gang has the floor. And then I'd like to give Counselor Strezzo and Davis a chance before we, before any votes were called. Counselor Nita Gang, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I feel like I've shown a great deal of respect and appreciation for the work that the people who put into this resolution has put forward. I prepared a speech about it, about why I didn't think it was right for us to vote on it tonight. I've said that it's something I want to work on. In fact, I actually did work on this when I was 14 in 1968 in New York City with my parents. There was a proposal for a civilian review board, which unfortunately failed at the time. But it was one of the first political involvement that I personally had in my life. So I'm very committed to this. I greatly appreciate the work that's gone into this. I think there's a lot of good stuff in here. I just don't feel that it has yet had the review of this council so that we should vote on it. Thank you.
Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. One thing I did have a question about that I did forget to ask. Where, and I guess through you, Mr. President, to Counselors Mba, Scott, and Davis, where does it say how many members should be on this, on the committees? I could not find that in here.
On that point?
Counselor Scott, yeah, take it away.
If I could, Mr. President. It doesn't, and that's very intentional. The fact is that there are still a lot of questions left to be determined for the final version, the number of employees in the review agency, the number of people serving on the police commission. And that's why what little structural points are in there are placed as percentages. So there are still a lot of things to work out. There are a lot of things that will be worked out in conjunction with the community, with counselors, with experts from all over the country. So there is much to still be determined in this legislation. As I said, there's a lot of work still to be done. But we did not explicitly spell out the number of people serving on that commission, nor their compensation for service on the commission, whether it would be a purely voluntary commission or one that is compensated with a stipend as our planning board or ZBDA. Actually, honestly, I could probably go on for about 20 minutes for the unanswered questions in this. But that's why this is going to take a lot of work.
Thank you, Counselor Scott. Mr. President, I don't feel like we can wait. I would be interested in voting on it, but I do want to know what our process would look like to enact this. I am ready to vote on it, though.
Counselor, I have an answer to that, but Counselor Davis has the floor, and he could probably answer it even better than me. So Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Counselor Strezzo, you hit on really, I think, what is really the key point in this current sort of sideshow that we're having now, which is what is the difference? And frankly, to be honest, as I see it, there is absolutely no difference. So technically, there is procedurally a difference between approving and sending something to committee and just sending it to committee. Practically speaking, there's absolutely no difference. And if I may, I mean, I don't have the floor yet. So I'll answer, that's my answer to your question. We could just send it to committee without a vote. We could approve it and send it to committee as we've done countless other times. And I will speak to that in more detail once I have been recognized.
You will continue to be recognized. Please proceed. Actually, are you done, Counselor Strezzo?
One more sentence. Thank you, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
I do advocate for voting. I don't think we can wait. But thank you.
All right, Counselor Davis, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, you know, look, I fully respect, as Counselor Nita Gang knows, I respect him tremendously and his input on just about everything we've done since I became a counselor at Alderman has been invaluable. I'm really confused, frankly, as to why we're having this conversation right now. I don't understand, and I did speak with Counselor Nita Gang about this earlier, and we had a very, you know, pleasant conversation, but I am completely at a loss as to why we are having this conversation. There are so many important issues before us tonight. And this is, has almost absolutely no meaning other than the meaning that it has now been given by Counselor Nita Gang's motion. And I find that really disappointing. We have, we do this all the time. Two years ago, I submitted a fully blown ordinance to require side guards and crossover mirrors and other devices to protect vulnerable road users, cyclists, and pedestrians. It was detailed. I worked with a national expert to put it together, and I submitted an ordinance. I want this to be the ordinance. And we approved it and sent it to committee. And there, we worked it out. We had a conversation with Solicitor's Office and the administration and others. And we made some tweaks, we changed it, and it became a law. Last year, I submitted a welcoming community ordinance, a full-blown, fully drafted ordinance that was the original draft, which was provided to me by the Welcome Project. They had been working with the ACLU on that. It was a bold proposal because it would have been the most aggressive welcoming community ordinance in the Commonwealth, if not beyond. And it was approved and sent to committee. And we made some tweaks, we made some changes. We had conversations with the Solicitor's Office. We went through the legislative process, and we passed it. Around that same time, I think it was a little bit early. In fact, Counselor Nita Gang, you and I were sitting at a meeting, a committee meeting, of which we were not members. And we were waiting and waiting for the administration to submit a short-term rental ordinance, an Airbnb ordinance, because the two of us and others had been really pushing for, you know, the city to put something in place that would help to open some of these properties up back to the rental market, take them out of the de facto hotel chains that they've been operating in. And you and I agreed that if the administration didn't submit something by X date, we were going to write an ordinance, and we were going to submit it. So we do this all the time. And this, what's before us now is, as Counselor Scott correctly noted, is quite far short from a full-blown ordinance. It doesn't even resemble a full-blown ordinance. It's a series of resolutions. We resolved that we should do these things. And I would love to see it approved and sent to committee wherein it will go through the entire process as we always have with every other one of those things. The facial recognition ban was another one. This is what we do. And Counselor Nita Gang has taken a vote like that many, many, many times, usually without even actually taking a vote because we just say, the president says this is approved and sent to committee. And it's never been an issue. So unless Counselor Nita Gang has some significant concerns and disagreements with what's in here, which by the way, as Counselor Scott said, just to reiterate, these are, these are components that are reflected in the Oakland ordinance, which is considered the best that's out there. Although even that ordinance is currently, there's a movement to change, and they're going to the ballot this fall to make some adjustments and upgrades. So the state of the art is in flux. And as Counselor Scott noted, there's lots of detail. I mean, the ordinance will look nothing like this because these are just a few bullet points. It will be a very extensive, very carefully thought-out and constructed thing. But I, you know, whether the, you know, if we're all sitting in the horseshoe, we wouldn't have to go around and do a roll call vote on it. The president might just say that's approved and sent to committee. So it's beyond me why we have to have this conversation. But since we're having it, I feel it's important to remind my colleagues that this is a procedural matter that makes basically no difference.
Counselor Nita Gang, you were mentioned, so I'll give you the floor to respond.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to drag this out, so I won't be making an amendment. I will just vote against it. I understand the will of the council. I can respond to Counselor Davis's points. You know, I'll just say quickly that submitting a proposed ordinance is not the same, in my mind, as approving a resolution that has very specific steps that are proposed that have not been, you know, that have not been vetted. So that's all I'll say at this point. I don't want to spend any more time on this. I've made my point. I think it's clear that this, you know, that this resolution, while it has tremendous value, needs a lot of work and that the specific pieces in it are not necessarily what we want to come out with after we've worked through it. And that was really the point that I wanted to make. Thank you.
All right. Do I hear a motion from anybody? Counselor Mba?
Yes, yes, Mr. President. I called a question.
You move to approve?
Yes, move to approve.
All right, Counselor Mba moves to approve. And all items require a roll call vote, but any discussion on the vote?
Mr. President?
Counselor Scott Davis.
Yeah, just, I would like to, I'm sure Counselor Mba would agree to a friendly amendment to approve and send it to the Committee on Legislative Matters.
Yes.
Yes, that was my intention as well. We're going to vote to approve and then refer to legislative matters for discussion. Any further discussion on the vote? Here are no further discussion. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call vote on approving the resolution. Item number 14. On that item, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mba.
Yes, please.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Nita Gang.
No.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, 10 counselors are in favor of that item. One is opposed that item has been approved.
All right, next item, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number 15, which is a resolution suited by Counselor Mba, McLaughlin, Klingon, and White that this council supports the Just Us Somerville organization of local residents of color and considers their demands regarding policing.
Counselor Strezzo would like to sign on. Any discussion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Ballantyne would like to sign on as well. You have the floor. Counselor Ewan Campan would like to sign on. There we go. You have the floor. Everybody wants to sign on to your order. Counselor Mba, go ahead.
Okay, I'll let it go. I mean, it's self-explanatory. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to my colleagues.
Counselor Scott would like to comment.
I don't need to. It is self-explanatory. I just look forward to doing the work for the community to bring all of these demands into actionable legislation and a forceful posture, considering. Thank you, sir.
If I could speak on this really quickly. So a lot of us attended that rally last weekend and heard some of the demands, but in talking to the group, they have not formalized their demands yet. So I would, unless there's a call for a vote, I would like to lay this on the table and keep it on the agenda until we get a full set of demands from the Just Us Somerville group. Any further discussion? Here are no discussion. Mr. Clerk, this will remain laid on the table with no vote taken or no referral to committee.
Very good, Mr. President. The next item is item number 18, which is a resolution suited by Counselor Klingon, McLaughlin, and White that the mayor work with the director of the Somerville Housing Authority to abolish the Housing Authority Police Department and reallocate the funds for social services for Housing Authority residents.
On the item, Counselor Klingon.
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you. So since my time on the council, I've been working a lot with my residents and my constituents in Mystic View Apartments. And, you know, it's become abundantly clear over time that the security that is in there, while they oftentimes serve as more of a hindrance than a help, and I do think that it's not only confusing to people. If you remember a few weeks ago when I spoke to the chief, to people. If you remember a few weeks ago when I spoke to the chief, I asked the chief in the Public Health and Public Safety meeting, do they know, like, are they supposed to be enforcing the mask thing, which I would assume they weren't, and they weren't supposed to be. But did they know that? And so I think there's a lot of confusion as to what exactly the powers and the jobs for these folks are. That said, I also just think it's important that, you know, if we're one community, I don't understand, you know, it's not like a huge complex. I don't think that they need their own security. If we're going to be part of one community, one Somerville, to me, it's just never made sense because I think, number one, we've found that there's zero way of any accountability. There's a supervisor there. I'm not, I don't know, there's no sort of system of discipline, if you will. I mean, these gentlemen, they carry guns, which the city gives them special police designation. At the very least, I don't, you know, I can't imagine why they're carrying guns. I don't think they need to be carrying guns at all. But I would just assume abolish them altogether and have, you know, the Somerville Housing Authority use that money to help residents in a more harm reduction way. I have talked to Representative Barbara, I've talked to the head of housing about this because, you know, as you know, it's a state property. Those are state employees. Well, they drive state vehicles. They're, you know, they're employed through Somerville Housing Authority, which we don't actually have control over. But, and I've also talked to residents in there who, most of which would like to see them go. So, you know, I figured, you know, now's the time. You know, it's important to show folks that, like, I just, I don't understand why that there's a world in and of itself that operates in there. And I think that continues to accentuate the isolation that, you know, my constituents in that housing development feel. So I feel strongly about this. I hope to work with whatever powers that be or whatever, you know, however we have to, who do we have to work with to make this happen and whether or not Mr. Joe Macaluso, the Director of S.H.A., is willing to work with us in getting rid of this police force.
On the item, let's see, Counselor Davis and Niedergang would like to sign on, and Counselor Scott would like to sign on and comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, a huge thank you to Counselor Klingon for his constant focus on this. It's something we've discussed on and off for quite some time, and I appreciate his tireless dedication to it. This existence of a police force that is completely out of the supervisory capacity of Somerville PD or really any civilian oversight is one that is deeply troubling. And I'll just go ahead and ask to sign on to all of Counselor Klingon's items related to the Housing Authority and policing this evening. I look forward to finally getting some answers to the questions we've been asking about this for quite some time.
Counselor Scott would like to sign on to those items. Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very interested in signing on on this. I need to know more information about it. Can you, Mr. President, can you give some comments as to why you put this forth? And can you tell me a little bit more about your process on this?
Counselor Klingon, do you want to answer that, or should I?
You can take a crack at it, Mr. President. I mean, I will just say that I kind of laid out my thought process behind the whole thing. As far, okay, as far as like how we're going to go about it, I think that's, you know, we need to work with the proper powers that be to make that happen. But it's something that I'm going to continue to push for until it's done. Does that answer your question?
Mr. President, through you to Counselor Klingon. No, you expressed your thought. I just, I can't, I'm trying to figure out how this would work and how this would roll out. And I don't feel like, and I wanted to hear, I heard from Counselor Klingon on this. I wanted to hear from Counselor McLaughlin on your process on this.
So if you're asking for the process, what I would recommend is to refer this to the Equity Committee for discussion because a lot of it are not things that we can do on our own, as are many, many issues in this city. This would require cooperation from the Housing Authority and the police. So I think what would be good is to have this item sent to committee for discussion and see what can be done. So we're going to have to work with other people to make this happen. But I think the theory for myself and Counselor Klingon is we could take this money, use it for other purposes, which is what people were calling on tonight. But we would require, that is actually federal funding. So we would need cooperation with the Housing Authority and the mayor's office to make this happen. But it's a good conversation to have, I think.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, that's one of my questions. If this is a federal property, how Somerville can, how are we intertwined in that? That's what I'm trying to really unpack. So I'm interested.
Mr. President, through you?
Yes, please.
So through you. So there's a federally funded side of apartments, of housing on one side, but it's a state-run, it's state property. The land is state land, and it's run by the Somerville Housing Authority. We're going to discuss this hopefully in your committee, so I look forward to doing that with you. And however, whatever it takes to get it done, however that needs to be done, that's exactly what we're going to do until the housing police find out more because I just don't think they're really a positive attribute to that community.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? There are no further discussion. I did want to just make a couple comments on it as well because this has been years in the making. Counselor Klingon, I know, has talked to community members about this, and I've spoken to community members about this. And I am not an outright police abolitionist. I know some people will be disappointed to hear that. But I am in favor of getting rid of things that I just don't think are needed. And I view the Housing Authority Police as an organization that's not trained on the same level of police, they're not held accountable on the same level, there's no city accountability. The next order you'll see is a more toned-down version of this where it's basically saying, can we at least have a way to report police misconduct in the Housing Authority buildings? These things don't exist, and they really just operate in a vacuum. You know, we used to have community policing in the city where every ward would have a police officer, and that's about one cop for every 10,000 people. The Mystic Projects have three police officers that work exclusively for the Housing Authority, and I just view that as kind of not necessary. And I'd also add that when something really does happen, they call the cops. Like, the cops are called to deal with real issues. So I just don't view having more supervision on the poorest people in our community as effective or anything really that we need. So this sounds like a radical proposal, but I think it's one that has really come. It's been a long time in the making. We can't do it all on ourselves, but I would at least like to start that conversation. And Counselor Klingon, you had another thought?
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. President. On your point in terms of, you know, neither am I a police abolitionist to that degree. As a matter of fact, I'd like to point out to folks that many of the residents I spoke to in there, whether we like to get this or not, they noted that they have a better relationship with SPD than they do with the housing security guards, or whatever they are. So again, I think it's actually causing more problems than need be, and I strongly urge getting rid of them. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Here are no further discussion. This item will be laid on the table and referred to the Equity Committee. Next item.
Item number 19 is a resolution submitted by Counselor Klingon, McLaughlin, White, and Scott that the Director of the Somerville Housing Authority develop a formal process for Housing Authority residents to report Housing Authority police misconduct in lieu of an outright abolition.
Counselor Ballantyne would like to sign on. Any discussion on the item?
Mr. President? Yeah, so just briefly, I think you already kind of touched on it. It's like, okay, well, in the meantime, as we're working towards, you know, getting rid of that internal security force, in the meantime, we'd like some sort of accountability. You know, we do give these gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, the privilege of carrying a firearm in our city, which I think we could also look at that as well in terms of, and that's another order I actually I meant to, I'm going to put in, is at the very least, we could, as a city, revoke their ability to carry a firearm. So again, this is pretty self-explanatory. I think it's long overdue, like you said, and I look forward to getting some sort of accountability system in there. So thank you.
Counselor Davis will sign on, and Chris and Counselor Strezzo would like to sign on. Davis would like to sign on to all Housing Authority items. And Counselor Strezzo, you have a comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I'm proud to be, that I will have a chance to work with, in the Committee of Equity with and on this. I just want to know more about it, and I'm happy to sign on. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Here are no further discussion. This item will be laid on the table and placed in the Equity Committee.
Item number 20, Mr. President, is an order submitted by Counselor Klingon, White, and Scott that Chief of Police expand the Community Outreach Help and Recovery Program.
Counselor Klingon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, you know, I have an order further down that asks for the chief to actually hold a summit. And this is in the same summit, explaining some of the things we've already done. And this is in the same vein as something that Counselor Niedergang and something that you said as well with regards to just some of the number of positive things that SPD has done thus far to become what I would consider, in terms of the surrounding cities, the most progressive police force around. Again, not that that's to say that we don't need major reforms. I'm all for the Oversight Committee. I think there's plenty we could do. But I also, in the meantime, want to acknowledge those things. And one of those things is the core program. It's, they have a team that's, you know, that's in there that does follow up with people that overdose. They do emergency healthcare, basically, emergency mental health calls, basically the things that we're talking about. But it's completely and totally underfunded. And if they had more help, I think, you know, that would be working towards the goal that everybody has been calling for on the internet and so on, and the emails. So that's exactly why, naturally, we'd want to expand that program as part of an overall plan. Thank you.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to be clear. My sign on was for Counselor Klingon's items related to the Somerville Housing Authority. I do not want to sign on to this particular item. While I praise the work that's being done by the core program, I fundamentally don't believe that it's a function that belongs in the police department, but rather an entirely separate department that is not part of the police. So if I can just ask the clerk to make sure my name isn't on the item, thank you.
Counselor Scott is withdrawn. Counselor Klingon, you had a comment?
Yeah, on that point, I may very well agree with you, Counselor Scott, that it doesn't belong in the police budget, but that's where it sits now. So again, it's sort of like on the measure of, you know, what can we do now? I'm asking for the expansion of that program. And if they pull it out and put it into the Department of Public Health, that's fine, too. So, but I understand where you're coming from. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Here are none. Counselor Rosetti would like to sign on. This item will be laid on the table. And let's put this in, let's put this in Public Health and Safety. And Counselor Ba would like to sign on. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, is 21, which is an order submitted by Counselor Klingon and White that the Chief of Police convene a summit to discuss any changes in policies and procedures that have been enacted to improve policing by taking on more of a harm reduction approach to policing.
Counselor Klingon?
Briefly, Mr. President, you know, I'm kind of just repeating myself at this point, but, you know, there have been many things that have been done. You know, a lot of the work that we have done in the community around addiction, our police were, you know, first to the call of, whether it be Narcan, whether it be, basically not even arresting people. And this is at the discretion of the officers. I don't want people to think that, you know, they don't arrest you for any amount of drugs. But I happen to know, again, secondhand, that our officers, I mean, I ask people on the street, I go, "Do you see any Somerville police?" They're like, "No." Like, yeah, they really, they're pretty much, you know, hands-off until there's an actual emergency. They're not, you know, I think we're lucky in that way. They're not following people around and pulling people over. Again, we need safeguards to make sure that when that does happen, that it's done in an equitable way and it's not due to profiling. But I do think it is important to note, you know, we have a young, fresh force. And actually, one of the things that kind of came to my mind is that the way this system works is that when we do cut the police, all the newer, younger police of color and so on will get cut, and then we'll have all of those old, you know, all the police who, you know, we may, would like to see move on to better things, they'll be down back in the cars and stuff. So I think these are things we need to consider. So I just really want people to have an idea because I think that, you know, I see these emails coming in. I think we have a national issue, and people are trying to mold this national issue here locally, and I think each community is different. And while policing in and of itself needs to be dealt with the same everywhere because, you know, things change, I do think it's worth noting, though, that we as a city have come a long way and done a lot of things since I was a kid. When I watched them, you know, things happened in the city that I certainly, I have to note the change. So, but again, this is just to have him come forward and speak on those things, and then we can, we certainly need to move forward and make change. Thank you.
Counselor Davis would like to sign on, and Counselor Scott, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir. Just to the point of the idea that cutting positions would eliminate younger officers of color on the Somerville Police Department. First of all, that's a policy decision that gets exercised by the mayor. You know, reductions in force can happen in all kinds of ways. Regardless of the contract, there are mechanisms that can be used, such as early retirement, different buyouts. And also, while I have made a Freedom of Information Act request of the city to tell me exactly how many vacant positions we currently have in the Somerville Police Department, I believe it is close to 16 positions currently vacant. So I think all of those could be cut, actually, without losing any officers in the SPD. Again, I made that request over a week ago. I still haven't got the answer on it. But I would say that the choice of what officers end up going is not quite as simple. It's just the lowest man on the top of the pool is gone.
Mr. President, real quick on that?
You want to comment?
Yeah, just on that, I agree, and I hope you're right. I hope they go the right direction that we would all like things to go in. Unfortunately, that's not our call. Thank you.
Counselor Ballantyne would like to sign on to items 20 and 21. Any further discussion on this item? Here are no discussion. This item will be laid on the table with a copy sent to the Chief of Police. I don't think we need to send this to committee. Counselor Ba would like to comment, and Counselor Strezzo would like to sign on to 20, item number 20. And so, who wanted to talk now? Let me see. Counselor White wants to comment on 22, so we're not there yet. That's it. Next item. Laid on the table, copy sent to the Chief of Police.
Item number 22 is an order submitted by Counselor Klingon and White that the Chief of Police and the Director of Personnel establish an officer wellness program for physical fitness and other mental wellness programs that most importantly includes a mandatory annual mental wellness evaluation by a mental health professional to address any potential mental health issues.
Counselor Klingon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. It's pretty self-explanatory. I know they did something similar in Chelsea, not necessarily with the piece about the mandatory mental health. The reason why I put that in there is because there's still a major stigma associated with mental health and seeking help for mental health issues. And so if it's mandatory, then, you know, nobody can, you know, I think the fear would be that an officer would be afraid to go and seek help in case it got out versus if everybody has to do it, then it kind of like takes that piece of it away. So obviously, you know, allowing the officer's time to work out and to practice of mindfulness is obviously helpful as well.
Any discussion on the item? Counselor White, you wanted to comment?
Yes, Mr. President. What I would like to do is, first, this one because it extended to the Director of Personnel, it wasn't my intention to sponsor it. And the reason is this. I believe the manual, mandatory annual evaluation by a mental health professional would have to be collectively bargained as well. I don't think we could order it ourselves. So that raises a concern. So I just wanted to address that and the reason why, you know, I'd like to be withdrawn as a sponsor.
Counselor White wishes to be withdrawn. Any further discussion? Here are no further discussion. This item will be laid on the table.
Item number 23 is an order submitted by Counselor Klingon and White that the Chief of Police establish a superior officer training program to ensure that superior officers communicate clear expectations of performance and conduct of those officers under their command and include a system of accountability when expectations aren't met.
Counselor Klingon?
Through you, Mr. President. Thank you. I mean, this is pretty self-explanatory. I think that oftentimes we see officers rise through the ranks, and, you know, they may not necessarily be skilled in being in a management-type position. And I think if officers don't have spelled out for them exactly what the expectations are and exactly how these superior officers want their men's and women's folks to act, I think it becomes confusing. I know they say, you know, the fish rots from the head. I think if we're going to address some of these issues, it's like, it's like any restaurant, any, you know, store, like bad management is, you know, equals those bad workers. So my hope is that we could ensure that our superior officers are able to convey and, able to convey and express their, exactly their, what their expectations are. And again, if those expectations aren't met, there should be some accountability. This doesn't negate of anything from the civilian oversight committee or any of that stuff. This is simply... civilian oversight committee or any of that stuff. This is simply, again, something that I think is important, no matter what happens with the future of policing. Thank you.
Counselor Strezzo would allow, that's item 24. Counselor White.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, just briefly, our Committee on Personnel and Appointments does a heck of a job in vetting candidates before they are approved for promotions. But there's a certain talent and skill that may not be obvious from, you know, the work that has been done, say, as a, as a patrol officer. And it probably may make sense to have a program so that now that, you know, the folks are in a position of authority over others, just to make sure that they have a, you know, the training that's necessary. And then, you know, it's, it's part of the review of the offices it takes place. Because command is a skill that may not necessarily be developed, you know, when you're in the lower, lower ranks without training. So that's my thought behind it.
Any further discussion? Here are no further discussion. This item will be laid on the table with a copy sent to the Chief of Police. Next item.
Item number 24 is a resolution submitted by Counselor Ewan Campen, Mbah, Valentine, Niedergang, Davis, Strezzo, Rosetti, and White.
All right, Counselor Strezzo would like to sign on, and I'd like to sign on as well. Counselor Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we've just spent the last several hours talking about policies that we would like to move forward on the local level. But all of us know that the types of changes that are being pushed for now are going to take work at the state and federal level, to say, to say the least. So this is a resolution in support of a congressional resolution co-sponsored by our Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley. And with your indulgence, I'd like to read it. It's relatively short. Whereas the tragic, go ahead.
Right ahead.
Whereas the tragic murders of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor by police officers have provoked unprecedented nationwide protests against long-present racism in our systems of policing and law enforcement, a traumatic déjà vu, in the words of Massachusetts Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley. And whereas at the very protests against police brutality, protests across the country have faced violent and unjust attacks from law enforcement, often in full view of cameras and media coverage. And many of these incidents have been blatantly mischaracterized by law enforcement prior to videos being made public. And whereas the City of Somerville has recommitted to taking immediate constructive actions through policies to increase transparency and democratic control over how our community polices itself and promotes the health and safety of all of our residents with an eye on equity, including a number of specific reforms presented by both the City Council and the mayor. And whereas Congresswomen Ayanna Pressley, Ilhan Omar, Barbara Lee, and Karen Bass have introduced a resolution in Congress, quote, condemning all acts of police brutality, racial profiling, and the use of excessive and militarized force throughout the country, that includes a number of specific steps to be taken at all levels of government. And whereas this resolution has been supported by the Massachusetts Black and Latino Legislative Caucus as part of their 10-point plan for local, state, and federal actions to undertake immediately. And whereas the Somerville City Council is committed to enacting concrete changes within our direct power and also advocating on behalf of our community at all levels of government to bring an end to police brutality and racial discrimination, now therefore be it resolved that the Somerville City Council goes on record of this, in support of this resolution condemning police brutality, racial profiling, and the use of excessive and militarized force throughout the country and stands in support of black people and communities of color which face disproportionate injustice in our criminal justice system. Resolved that the City Council forward a copy of this resolution to our federal delegation on behalf of the City Council. Thank you.
Counselor Scott and Klingon would like to sign up for items number 24 and 25. Any discussion on this item? Here are no discussion. This item is laid on the table with a copy sent to our federal elected officials. I don't think this has to go to committee so we can vote for approval later. Next item. Mr. Clerk, you there?
I apologize, Mr. President. Item 25 is an order submitted by Counselor Ewan Campen, White, and Klingon that the Director of Health and Human Services work with this council to create and fund an unarmed agency that responds to mental health emergencies, addiction and substance abuse emergencies, and other nonviolent crises.
Counselor Ba and Strezzo would like to sign on. And Counselor Ewan Campen, you have a call.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just want to talk briefly about my Monday of this week. At our, at our City Council, at our committee meetings on our, with our weekly COVID updates, one of the slides that we're presented with goes over the, the emergency calls to fire and police. And I was struck, as I, I often am at all of these meetings, and I know many of my colleagues have at these meetings, at informer meetings, just how overwhelmingly the, the calls to our police force are not about violent crime or really crime at all. If you look at the way they're characterized, you know, on, on Monday's slides, over 90% of the calls were non-crime related. And I think many people have, have raised the issue, why has our society started depending almost exclusively on our police forces for so many issues around mental health, around addiction, around homelessness, related issues like that, root causes? Why have we started to, to, to depend so thoroughly on our police force, which really was not created for that purpose? And then the other thing that happened to me earlier this week was I was reading an op-ed, I'm ashamed to say, from James Comey, former director of the FBI, not someone that I agree with on many issues of law enforcement. And in this op-ed, I just want to read a quick quote. He's talking about these calls for defunding the police. And here's what he says, quote, "Defunding the police makes sense only if it means relieving the cops of responsibilities they shouldn't have, such as truancy, mental health interventions, homelessness, and substance abuse. If people want to pay someone else to handle that and leave the police to the business of law enforcement, it would be a blessing." That's the end of the quote. So the idea with this order is that we start this conversation in earnest. What would it really take for us to stop putting these issues in the hands of police? Let them handle issues of investigating serious and violent crimes. And I am not under any illusion that we are ever going to be in a situation where we don't need a force like that. You know, within the last couple of weeks, there was a shooting in a couple of blocks from my house in Ward 3. You know, this happens more than any of us, you know, would, would imagine in a place like Somerville. But violent crime does happen here, and I do believe that there will remain a very, very important responsibility to address that. But if you look at the statistics, you know, 90% of the calls that we're getting at, at the least are, are not on those issues. So my hope is that we can start a, in earnest, a public process where we talk to people that, you know, I'm not the first person to suggest this, obviously. Lots of communities have thought about this, and I want to know how communities are, are approaching this and what members of our community would like to see. So I would ask that this go to committee and that we take up work on it in earnest as soon as possible. Thank you.
Counselor Niedergang and Valentine would like to sign on. And Counselor Strezzo has her comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a wonderful, wonderful order. And not to mention the fact, so, so thank you, Counselor Ewan Campen for this, but also Somerville cares about prevention is already in Health and Human Services. So this seems like it makes total sense. Of course it does. And I'm proud to sign on to it. Thank you very much.
Counselor Ba.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Counselor Ewan Campen for, for putting this forward. I just want to highlight that, you know, like, we should always remember that racial justice is our fiscal responsibility, you know, at the City Council. So I really appreciate, you know, like him putting this together. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Here are no further discussion. This item will be laid on, so Counselor Rosetti would like to sign on. I apologize.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Here are no further discussion. This item will be laid on the table and referred to the Health and Human Services Committee, Public Health and Safety. Next item.
Mr. President, the next police-related item is item number 30, which is a resolution submitted by Counselor Valentine that the mayor, the chief of police, and the Director of Health and Human Services discussed with this council at its evening meeting tonight, their declaration of systemic racism as a public safety and health emergency.
Counselor Valentine.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the, the mayor put this declaration forward. I've asked the administration that they come before the, the council to explain what's going on. They could not do it this evening. So I would just request that this gets laid on the table until they can come before the council. Thank you.
Any discussion? Here are no discussion. This item will be laid on the table. No vote taken, not referred to committee. So we'll take this up at the next available meeting. Next item.
Mr. President, could I ask that my other orders, I had two late orders, be taken out of order and read now?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, before we, if I may, excuse me, Counselor Valentine, if I may, before we get to the next orders, could I ask, just Counselor Valentine, you to elaborate a bit on why the request for this someone from the administration to come to us and talk about this somewhat extraordinary declaration wasn't, why they weren't able to do that tonight?
Counselor Valentine.
Through you, Mr. President, I don't have the answer. I thought it was a pretty important declaration. And I thought it was important they come and explain that to us. But I don't have the answer except that maybe they weren't available to do it.
Mr. President, is there anyone from the administration that could speak to that? Because I, I'm, I'm really surprised. I thought for sure we'd be hearing from, I would have thought from the mayor himself, but at least from someone from the administration in response to this order, if not by their own accord, to talk to us about this.
Oh, I believe there might be someone in the, one of the mayor's aides. But I would also add that, yeah, I would have liked to get this update tonight, but I'd rather not spend the next few minutes arguing about why we're not hearing it tonight. If that's okay with you, Ms. Counselor Davis.
No argument intended. I just thought someone might give us their perspective, at least explaining why they couldn't come.
Okay. Is Annie Connor in the audience or Kishbu Weber?
Good evening, counselors and Mr. President. Through the chair, this is Kishbu Weber from the mayor's office. I just want to confirm, can everyone hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Great, okay. As to Counselor, Counselor Davis's question, the reason that the administration was not able to provide to, to discuss this particular item is because it was on relatively short notice and with everything going on, the Chief of Police, the Director of HHS, and the mayor were not available to come before the council this evening. We plan to have, have them available at the next City Council meeting on June 25. And we're also working on a memo for the council that will lay out this issue. Thank you.
Any comments? Here are no comments. This item will be laid on the table. Hopefully, we can have a discussion as soon as possible. So now Counselor, that's done. Counselor Valentine, if it's all right with you, I'd like to get to police orders, just for the sake of, and then we'll take a roll call on all police items. And then we can come back to that. If I forget, please raise your hand again. All right, next item.
Mr. President, we are now up to item number 79, which is an order submitted by Counselor Mbah to the city solicitor draft an ordinance prior to this council's June 25 meeting banning racial profiling.
Counselor Ba.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, it's such a messed up system, built-in bias system. A colleague of mine, whizos on the City Council in Newton, said annually, they get, you know, statistics like 500 phone calls that, that people call just to say they've seen a black person in their neighborhood. It's, it's, it's really ridiculous that, you know, we, we live in a system that continues to perpetuate, you know, like racial profiling. So I think we need to pass this right now.
Any discussion on the resolution? Here are no discussion. This item will be laid on the table. I will take a roll call vote when we're through all the police items. Next item.
Mr. President, the last police-related item that I'm aware of is item number 80, which is an order submitted by Counselor Niedergang that the Chief of Police or the Director of Personnel report to this council no later than June 18, the number and rank of all sworn officers and civilian employees, including their job titles, in the police department annually from 1987 to 2020.
Counselor Niedergang.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we know, there's been a dramatic decrease in crime in the city over the last 30 years, about 60% decrease. And I think it's important for us to look at whether there has been a commensurate decline in the number of police officers. So I wanted to have the data so we could do that analysis. Thank you.
On the item, Counselor Scott.
I just, I applaud the desire. I agree. It's important information. But given my experience, better get ready to file a Freedom of Information Act request on this, Counselor.
Any further comments? Counselor Valentine on, on the previous item law? Well, let's finish this.
Yes, Mr. President. I, I just wanted to, to mention, you didn't say whether this one would be referred to legislative matters.
Item 79.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam, Madam, oh, I wanted to say, Madam President. Thank you, Counselor.
That's okay.
I would like this to President.
No, thanks. All right, address it through me. Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. President, with your, at your discretion, I would like this to be sent to legislative matters.
Item 79?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, we're on item 80 right now. So any discussion on item 80?
Yes, Mr. President. It's Counselor Niedergang. I'd like this to go to finance.
All right. Any further discussion? See, no discussion. This item will be laid on the table and placed in the Finance Committee. And now if we could go back to item number 79, you would like this referred to legislative matters, Counselor Ba?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? See, none. This item will be laid on the table. Counselor Ba, what do you think about? Do you want it in legislative matters or do you want it in your Equity Committee? That you're the chair of?
Mr. President, given the, that we don't have a lot of time, so since I need this, you know, ordinance crafted by the next City Council meeting, it will be, it will be nice for it to go to legislative matter.
Okay. This item will be laid on the table and referred to legislative matters. Next item. So now we're done with police items. Am I correct, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that is correct. We're at the end of the police items.
All right. Well, how about we do a roll call vote on all items laid on the table that were not explicitly meant to remain laid on the table or items that people wanted to vote, well, the one negative vote has happened already. So please take the items off the table and call the roll.
This is a roll call vote, Mr. President, on the approval of items.
Mr. Clerk, really quick, I should ask if there's any discussion on calling the roll.
Mr. President?
Counselor Rosetti.
I just want to be sure it's just item 30 that we're keeping on the table.
Is that still on the table, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, very good. Any further questions or discussion? Here are none. Please call the roll.
Mr. President, this is a roll call vote on the approval of items to date in this meeting, which includes, by my count, item numbers 3, 8, 12, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 79, 80, 81, and the late item that was submitted by Counselor Niedergang, and includes the placing on file, item 78, which was the public communication, which is also being copied to the Equity Committee. On that motion, or on that set of
On that motion, or on that set of items, Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mbah?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Valentine?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Nedergang?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils voted in favor of those items. Those items are approved or placed on file as appropriate.
Okay. Counsel Valentine, you had a couple of orders you wanted to take out of order? Counsel Valentine? Until I hear from Counsel Valentine, I guess we'll return to the, how about we start with some?
I'm sorry.
You have the floor. You can go right ahead. We see you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe I still have one item that might be on the agenda, and I have two late items. If they could just be read either in order or together.
Counsel Valentine would like to take three items out of order. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Counsel Rosetti?
Excuse me, sir, Mr. President. I just want to be certain, on the public hearing items, are there any members of the public waiting to speak on the public hearing items?
I'm sure there are.
I really think we need to, I mean, they've waited over two hours.
All right, so you object to taking the items out of order?
Unless it's pressing.
All right, Counselor Valentine Yields. Okay. So now, we can get back to public hearings. Thank you, everyone, for attending. I still see a lot of people in the crowd. We're going to move on to non-police items, and you're more than welcome to continue watching your government at work. But I guess we will, Counselor Rosetti moves to take the public hearing items out of order, as well as the utilities that we will be voting on tonight. Any discussion on taking those items out of order? Here are none. Mr. Clerk, please read the first item.
Mr. President, the first item is a public hearing in a grand location submitted by EverSource to install 64 feet of conduit in Heath Street from a utility pole to a point to pick up at 128 Heath Street.
I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on the item? Let me find Jackie Duffy. Ms. Duffy, you're on the floor.
Good evening, Jackie Duffy. EverSource would like to install 64 feet of conduit in Heath Street to supply electric service to 128 Heath Street.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Give me a moment to go through the audience. Please, if you're here to speak on this item, use the green hand signal. All right, I don't see anyone here to speak on this item. This public hearing will remain open till when, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that would be Friday, June 19th. The public hearing period should remain open.
This item, the public hearing will stay open till June 19th. There'll be no votes taken on this item tonight or any other new public hearings, and we'll lay it on the table and vote on it next meeting. But is there any discussion from the council on this item? Here are no discussions. This item will be laid on the table with the public hearing open till June 19th. Next item.
Item number five, Mr. President, is a public hearing on a grand location submitted by EverSource to install 42 feet of conduit in Heath Street from a different, from that utility pole to a point to pick up at 126 Heath Street.
I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak on the items?
Jackie Duffy, EverSource would like to install 42 feet of conduit in Heath Street to provide electric service to 126 East Street.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? You can use the green hand signal. I hope we didn't keep you waiting. Seeing no further comment, this item will be laid on the table, and the public hearing will remain open till June 19th. Are there any counselors who wish to comment? Here are no further discussions. This item is laid on the table. Public hearing open till June 19th. Next item.
Item number six is a public hearing in a grand location submitted by EverSource to install 43 feet of conduit in Murdoch Street from a pole to a point to pick up at 32 Murdoch Street.
I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to speak on the item?
Jackie Duffy, EverSource would like to install 43 feet of conduit for a new service to 32 Murdoch Street.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Use the green hand signal if so. All right, seeing no further comments, public hearing will remain open till June 19th, and this item will be laid on the table. Any discussion from the council? Here are no discussions. This item is laid on the table. Public hearing open till June 19th. Next item.
Mr. Clerk?
Counselor Rosetti?
Before we go to other items, there is still on the table. I would like to, I spoke with yourself and the clerk prior to the meeting about taking up a late item while EverSource rep was in our presence.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I spoke to you, sir, and the clerk, Mr. Long, about taking up my late item while the EverSource rep was in our presence.
Okay. Is this the last public hearing, Mr. Clerk, for EverSource?
Yes, Mr. President, we've concluded the public hearings.
Okay. Well, we'll lay this on the table and have the public hearing open till June 19th, and could you read Counselor Rosetti's late order?
This is an order submitted by Counselor Rosetti. The Commissioner of Public Works, contact EverSource for an explanation of its reasoning for not having to notify homeowners when randomly installing bollards on private property.
On the item, Counselor Rosetti?
Appreciate your patience, Mr. President. Thank you. I had an experience in my neighborhood, actually, and I'll be upfront that it was my property and one of my neighbor's properties. We noticed last weekend that there were two, probably four-foot-sized bollards, each, two on my property, two on one of my neighbor's properties. We had no clue where they came from, who put them there, what they were about. You know, it struck, I got very nervous about who was on my property and who put these things in my property. So I first contacted the city to make sure there wasn't anything going on in the city, that they were doing work, and they were protecting things and whatnot. City knew nothing about it. So then I called EverSource as a customer and inquired about, you know, if they knew why they were put on my property and why wasn't I informed. And I was told that, that they don't have to notify the homeowner to go onto our property. They considered it to be placed there for a safety reasoning, and by no means did they have to notify us. The city people I spoke to said that, no, common practice is that the homeowners are notified. So my concern is that, not for myself, but I know that if they're going to go randomly throughout the city now and start installing these without notifying homeowners, I'm sure some of my colleagues are going to be getting notified from their constituents, because they're not the prettiest-looking things, but they might be for safety. I still don't have clear answers. I'm still waiting for further answers. But I need to have a review by our administration with EverSource about what their policy is and what right do they have to go on anyone's property unannounced. There's no problem happening in my home, no problem happening in my neighbor's home. They felt that it just needed attention, but they didn't notify anybody. And I don't know through you, Mr. President, if Ms. Duffy knows the answer to this this evening, if this is normal practice.
I don't know if it's normal practice, but usually the bollards are put up to protect, like, a pad mount transformer. But I would have to take a ride by. You can just, you have my email and my cell phone. You can just send me your address, and I can go by and see, or have one of the supervisors go by and see, and see why they put those bollards out there. Usually, it's to protect, like, a pad mount transformer so it doesn't get hit. But do you have a pad mount transformer on the property?
I have no clue what you're talking about.
Like, a big green, big green pad mount. You don't, right? It's not on your property.
Not that I'm aware of.
No. So you know what? Tomorrow, I'll take a ride out there and look at it.
Mr. President, yep, but Ms. Duffy, it's not about me and my property, it's about my constituents. When I was told by EverSource, it's their practice that they do not have to notify their homeowner, and they can still go on property at any time that they so choose. That is, that just doesn't sit well with me at all. And I can, you know, I spoke through the customer service number to a woman by the name of Kaylee. So myself and my neighbor are not thrilled, and I can only imagine the number of constituents who would have the same reaction if this is going to be how business will be done from here on in.
Right, right, which I don't blame you. But let me, let me see if I can find out tomorrow, but I'm sure they're supposed to have permission to get on your property. So I will, I will find out your answer.
Thank you. If you could put that answer through the clerk, please, so my colleagues as well will know the answer. Thank you.
Okay, satisfied. Counselor Rosetti, what would you like to do with this item? Counselor Rosetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I put it, put it in Public Works and Public Utilities, I guess, but if we happen to get the answer before the next meeting, we can discharge it and take it out of that committee and mark it, you know, as information received. Or we can table it and keep it on our committee, whichever you prefer.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to lay this on the table and refer to Public Utilities and Public Works. And then, Counselor White would like to take up items number 35 through 42, which are public utilities projects. Counselor White?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move to waive the readings of items 35 through 41, and upon the assurance of the clerk that we received no comments that were negative to those, have them all approved this evening. And then, 42, I would ask that be waived basically at the discretion of Counselor Scott, as far as how he would like to continue.
All right, Counselor White would like to waive the readings of 35 through 42 and move for approval. Any discussion?
41, Mr. President, just up to 41.
35 through 41. Any discussion? Here are no further discussions. Let's lay this on the table and take up item 42 first. Counselor White on item number 42?
Yeah, that's the dog kennel one that we laid on the table at the last meeting. I was just wondering, you know, Alderman Scott's, Counselor Scott's view of it.
All right, Counselor Scott?
Thank you. It just makes me feel like the good old days, Alderman Scott. So I'll admit, there's been a few things going on the last week or two here, and I have not gotten to go by and actually slip notes under anybody's door. I'd ask the clerk to refresh my memory. This isn't being a renewal. There were no postcards mailed to Butters on this, were there?
No. Counselor Scott, there were no notices to Butters for this renewal. They have not been notified, to my knowledge.
Yeah. I don't want to hold these folks up anymore. I don't. So I, it's on me for not going out with my mask on and knocking on the doors, and if there's a problem, we'll make it right in the future. But I'd go ahead and have this get approved.
Contrary to popular belief, we are still sheltering in place where Counselor Scott. So, and I don't knock you for, for being the mailman. So we have items number 35 through 42, as well as a late item, to call, to vote on. Any discussion on that vote? Here are no discussions. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
This is a roll call vote on approving items 35 to 42 and the late item that was submitted by Counselor Rosetti. On those items, Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mbah?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Valentine?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Nedergang?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor. Those items have been approved.
All right. So we got a couple items that city staff have been waiting to talk to. Unless anybody has any objections, Counsel Klingon would like to take items number 51, 62, and 52 out of order, but in that order. Any discussion on taking these items out of order? Here are no further discussions. Mr. Clerk, please read item number 51.
Item 51 is a request, the request of the adoption of Mass General law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 54, which exempts small personal property accounts from taxation.
On the item, I believe Mr. Bean or Mr. Wright are here to speak on this item, but first, Counselor Scott, do you have any comments? This will be a finance matter.
Actually, Mr. President, I'm speaking on that this evening.
I apologize. Counsel Valentine?
Thank you. No, I think it seems pretty straightforward. We have about $250 million in revenue, and we have about $16,000 for these small businesses that takes up, you know, 0.31% of our budget. But when it comes time to mailing things out, and these small businesses turn over a lot, and they become delinquents on their payments, they take up about 36% of the time to deal with the mailing and the reconciliation here of the treasury. So they, along with about 188 other communities in the state, have banded together and have asked that anything, that there be a cap of $5,000. So anything under $5,000 is just not taxed. So Mr. Golden is here to speak further on it, but I think it's, is very reasonable to support this. But I sponsor Mr. Golden to speak. Thank you.
Counsel Valentine would like to sponsor Mr. Golden to speak. Seeing no objection, I thought I saw your face on the monitor. Frank, you have the floor? Mr. Golden, are you there? Do I need to unmute you? Mr. Clerk, I don't see, oh, here we go. Yeah, Frank, where'd you go? Frank, your phone, your thing is unmuted. You can speak. To Mr. Golden, please let us know when you hear this. Let's lay this item on the table and take up the, yes, take up the next item.
Mr. President, I think you called for item 62, which is a request of the mayor requesting acceptance of a grant of $3,110 with no new match required from the Mass Council on Aging to the Council on Aging for caregivers and memory cafe support.
Any discussion on the item? Here are no discussions. The city did ask if it was possible to vote on this tonight, but we would need a motion to approve this item, or would people refer it to go to committee? Speak now.
Moved.
Counselor White moves to approve?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, let's do a roll call vote on this one right now.
This is a roll call vote on the approval of item 62. This is a roll call vote on the approval of item 62, the grant for the Council on Aging. On that end, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils are in favor. That item has been approved.
All right, item 52 then, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, item 52 is a request to the mayor requesting approval of an order to not require this council's authorization pursuant to ordinance 12-14 for businesses that are seeking outdoor food and beverage service on the public way through this November 1st.
On the item, Counselor White.
Thank you, Mr. President. All members should have received a memorandum from me, followed up with the procedures of the Licensing Commission, and then also the city standards as well. For the folks at home, basically, as the law currently stands, the city council is required to approve any outdoor seating on a public way. And then also the entity seeking it has to go to the Licensing Commission if they have alcoholic beverages or they have a public victual's license to serve food. Because of the coronavirus outbreak and its impact on our restaurants, the administration thought it would be most expeditious, expeditious to help them with essentially one-stop shopping. So what the order seeks to do is basically, for want of a better term, cede our authority under the ordinance just for the period of time going no later than November 1st, so that the Licensing Commission would have authorization for outdoor seating permits for restaurants that serve alcoholic beverages and also food through a commanditulous license. And I think Mr. Lynch is here and also folks from the administration, if there are any questions. But, you know, based on my discussions with the administration and also restaurant owners, I think this makes eminent sense to try to help them to recoup some of the, you know, monies that they've lost, and also to be able to put people to work. So hopefully, once they do the outdoor seating, you know, there'll be food service and more people in the kitchen to work. So I think it's, it's a good request all around.
All right, on the item, Counselor Ewan Campan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm fully in support of this. As Counselor White said, you know, when I, when I first read it, I had questions, as I'm sure any city councillor would, about, you know, what, what do we do if this leads to a bad situation where neighbors are complaining? And, you know, as I've thought about it, I'd say that I am committed to working on those issues as they arise. But, you know, any discomfort I had with that, I think really pares in comparison to what would happen if lots and lots of our restaurants go out of business. So, you know, I'm fully on board with doing everything that we possibly can to just make sure that these folks can, can get through this.
Counselor Rosetti, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. President, I do. I have no problem with this because it will be temporary, of course. But the one question I have is, what's before us now will allow them that authority to November 1st. But I believe the way our ordinance reads for the outdoor seating, it's to December 31st. So, you know, there are a lot of outdoor seedings that have those space heaters that keep the outdoor seedings, you know, beyond November 1st if, because it's New England and the weather could be warmer. I don't want to limit outdoor seating to November 1st since our ordinance, I believe the way I read it, reads till December 31st.
And Counselor White, you have a comment on that point?
I think it would be best for the Licensing Commission, but I think that's for the applications pending. So I, I would assume that their, their license would go to the end of the year as well because they're issuing it. But if Mr. Lynch is here or somebody from the administration?
Do you want to sponsor Mr. Lynch to speak? Is anyone in the audience here to address this question?
I believe Mr. Proakas is here. I saw his name up, so I would sponsor him.
Yes.
George, is he there?
Mr. President?
Is that Mr. Lynch? There's Joe.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Joe Lynch.
Counselor White, you want to sponsor Mr. Lynch to speak? You have the floor.
I will sponsor Mr. Lynch.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Counselor White, Commissioner Joe Lynch from the Somerville Licensing Commission. Is there a specific question about the end date for the temporary authorization?
Can I speak to that, Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor White, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Lynch, the, the question is, the order goes till November 1st, but does it mean that the licenses that are granted pursuant to that end as of December 31st?
Thank you for the question, Counselor White. It does not mean they will go to December 31st. This means that under the governor's orders, in which he granted certain authorities and powers to the local licensing authority, under his order through the ABCC and as well to the local licensing authorities, this will only last through November 1st, 2020, under that governor's order. So anything that has been issued prior to your council turning this over to my commission, those dates stay. This is during the order of the emergency. So my powers to issue anything after November 1st cease, and it gets turned back over to the council. So let me try it this way. If there is a current license that has been issued by the council prior to your authorization for our commission to start ordering, those will stay in place till December 31st. But if I am issuing new licenses for new outdoor food and beverage service on the public way, my authority to keep those in place is only through November 1st.
Do I have a follow-up on that?
Yes, you have a floor?
Thank you. So, Mr. Lynch, does that mean after November 1st, the, so first the seating would expire, that you'd issued for those that we hadn't previously issued? Now, for the ones that we previously issued, are any of them open till the end of the year? I mean, some of them may be. So do they then have to go to you folks for a one month, or I guess it'd be a two-month license to sell alcoholic beverage on those seating, seats?
To Counselor White? No, if they currently do not have an alcoholic beverage license for their outdoor seating, we would not issue an alcoholic license for those folks without going through the normal procedure of getting on the agenda, notifying the abutters, notifying the counselors, and they would still have to go through the ABCC. This is only for food and beverage service, non-alcoholic.
So through the chair, so alcohol, okay, so alcoholic, how many licenses, I don't know if you know, do you have to serve alcoholic beverages outdoors that aren't covered by the governor's order?
I cannot give you the, the direct answer.
We do have, Mr. Proakas is in the audience as well. He might have more details. Are you there, Mr. George?
If, if, if you're okay to, to sponsor me to speak, I can, I'm happy to add a little bit more detail that I can. I'm not sure I can answer Counselor White's specific question, though.
Okay, well, if you're not going to answer this one specifically, maybe we'll wait because there's other questions. But Counselor White, did you have any more comments?
Well, I think Counselor Rosetti raises a good point, but there's nothing we can do now because of the governor's order. So maybe what you could do is, I mean, my hope is we approve the order, but then refer it to Licenses and Permits Committee so we can have something in place for the period after November 1st to deal with the licenses, et cetera. So therefore, those folks won't be negatively impacted. So I'll work with the licensing, the committee will work with the Licensing Commission so that we can address all of these licenses that are expiring, or the permits that are expiring on November 1st. I think that's the easiest way to do it.
All right, George has a comment on that point, and then Counselor Rosetti, and then Counselor Ballantyne.
I certainly don't want to dwell on this. I just wanted to point out one thing. The governor's order, in addition to everything else it does, also eliminates the step where folks who can sell alcohol inside of their building in order to be able to bring it outside usually go through a state step with the ABCC. That step is eliminated through this process. The local commission gets control of that, and then they can just inform the ABCC that they've moved this particular business into being outside. That portion of the order also expires on November 1st. So the only challenge really is if someone is newly outside, they haven't been before, they're serving alcohol, November 1st passes, the governor's order expires, they're going to have to go through, back through the ABCC to keep serving alcohol outside from November 1st to the end of the year. Probably not a big deal. We can discuss it more in committee, but we'd have to just work out, we timed the things with the governor's order because of details like that.
All right, Counselor White, is that good?
Yeah, I think it makes sense. It protects the folks for who, for which Counselor Rosetti raised the concern. And we are stuck with the governor's order, so there's nothing we can do tonight. So this is, you know, I think this is the most expeditious ways is to approve it tonight so people can get back to work and businesses can start recouping funds.
All right, Counselor Rosetti, do you still have a comment?
One brief question. I appreciate Mr. Proakas's response. Thank you, that was very helpful for me. Thank you to the Chair of License and Permits for taking this on also. But I just want to make sure I understand it. So I'm a business owner. I have a liquor license. I also have an outdoor seating permit. But given the six-foot distancing, I have to realign, reassign the way I do my outdoor seating, and I may be adding more tables outdoors. Is that what would be approved through this up till November 1st as well? Is that what this commission will also have the authority to approve?
Through the chair, Counselor Rosetti, it's Chairman Lynch. Let me see if I understand the question. I have an existing restaurateur who already owns a liquor license, but they have no outdoor seating.
No, no, sir, they do. They already have permitted outdoor seating.
Okay.
But given the COVID and the six-foot distancing, they may, working with the city, add additional tables outside, maybe using a couple of parking spots on a street. I know that's under consideration right now, but that's what I'm thinking about. So if they, do they need to come then before your commission to receive the authorization to continue with their outdoor permit seating, continue with their already pre-approved liquor license, but adding more tables? Do they need to come before you for the addition of more tables?
The answer to the question is yes, Counselor Rosetti, through the chair. They would be required, when they expand the current outdoor footprint of what they have already been authorized to utilize, whether it's on public or private property, they are still required to come to the Licensing Commission to request that expansion of footprint.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any further questions or comments on this item?
Last comment, Mr. President?
Counselor White?
Thank you. And this is in response to the concern raised by Counselor Ewan Campan, and it might be some other folks' concerns as well. Mr. Lynch has assured me that he will work with, you know, all councils if there are any concerns raised by any residents or any concern the councillor may have as far as the operation, as far as noise, as far as trash, any types of violations, and also with regard to any COVID-type violations. And, you know, since Mr. Lynch is here, maybe he can just, you know, reassert his commitment to work with the members of this council.
Mr. Lynch, do you want to reassert that?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have, I have assured Counselor White that this is, that this temporary seating over to the Licensing Commission, we will work with every city councillor, whether it's at large or a specific city council. We're working with Economic Development, ISD, the Somerville Police Department, City Clerk's Office, to ensure that this new temporary process goes off without a hitch. I can't guarantee that the process will be perfect, but the commitment that the Licensing Commission has made to the administration, as well as now to the council, is that our goal is not to cause more problems. Our goal is to put the restaurant industry back to work.
And a follow-up, and to protect the residents of the city as well in case any license holders abuse their license and create problems for neighborhoods.
That is correct. Through the President, Counselor White, we have worked with Mr. Director Proakas's group, as well as the Somerville Police Department. Through the period that we're authorized, November 1st through 2020, there will be a system put in place for violations of these temporary licenses. And it is my recommendation, and it's working its way right through legal, I think as we speak, and Director Proakas may be able to speak to it, we will be giving two written warnings to anybody who flagrantly violates these privileges. The third will, and it is part of the policy of the Licensing Commission, that third infraction for these temporary licenses, we will immediately suspend the license. And that is part of the governor's turning over of some of the authorities to the LLAs, the local licensing authorities. So our intent is not to punish. Our intent is to make sure that what we're allowing is safe for the public and safe for the restaurateurs.
Any further comment on this item? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Counselor White moves to approve. Here are no discussion. I'll just add that I strongly support this. I definitely want to get our smoke businesses up and going. I love outdoor seating, and this is just temporary. So I support it. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. President, roll call vote on the approval of item number 52. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils are in favor of that item. That item has been approved.
Mr. President, I move for reconsideration in the hopes that reconsideration fails.
Oh, I missed that one, Counselor White. Counselor White moves for reconsideration in the hopes that reconsideration fails. Any discussion? So we're going to call a roll on reconsideration, on the hopes that it fails. If you want to reconsider, vote yes. If you don't want to reconsider, vote no. Am I correct? We got that?
That's correct. Yes, you have that.
Up on discussion, Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, can you explain this to me, please?
Yeah, so this is something used to happen a lot more, but basically, you can, we just voted to approve the item, and you can, someone can later come up and move to reconsider. So you could vote and say, hey, I want to reconsider my vote and change it. But Counselor White's moving for reconsideration in the hopes that it fails so that someone could later move for reconsideration and change it. So a no vote means that you don't want to reconsider, and a yes vote means that you do. So unless you want to keep talking about this, I would vote no.
Thank you.
Did someone else want to weigh in? All right, calling a roll on reconsideration.
This is a roll call vote on reconsideration of item number 52. Counselor Klingon.
No.
Counselor Mbah.
No.
Counselor White.
No.
Counselor Ballantyne.
No.
Counselor Strezzo.
No.
Councilor Niedergang?
No.
Councilor Davis?
No.
Councilor Scott?
No.
Councilor Ewan Campan?
No.
Councilor Rosetti?
No.
And Councilor McLaughlin?
No.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted against reconsideration. Reconsideration has failed.
Okay. Let's go back to item number 52. I believe Frank is in the audience now. Mr. Golden, I have unmuted you.
Mr. President, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, thank you.
Mr. President, Honorable Counsel, through you, the Board of Assessors respectfully requests the Honorable Counsel's adoption of Clause 54 of Section 5, Chapter 59. The statute provides for the local option of exempting personal property accounts from taxation if the assessable value is less than certain amount in any year, provided the limit set does not exceed $10,000. The Board is proposing an exemption limit to $5,000 in value. This change does not affect the workload in the assessing department, as it still must calculate assessed values for all accounts, whether over or under the limit. However, it will reduce the city's administrative billing and collection costs, as these accounts tend to have the high delinquency and ownership turnover. Throughout the Commonwealth, 188 municipalities accept the local option, with 38% electing adoption of the exemption of $5,000. Please note, this change will not affect the city's revenue stream from tax collections, as the revenue no longer collected from these accounts will be absorbed by the city's other taxpayers. For fiscal year 2020, 1,273 taxable accounts were generating a total of roughly $5.3 million. These accounts account for 36% of those bills mailed, but only .31% of the revenue. With factoring the high number of delinquencies, as well as associating billing and collection costs, the city nets minimal revenue from these accounts. It basically speaks for itself that these 454 accounts are more of an administrative burden than a benefit to the community at this time, under the current circumstances. Thank you.
All right, Councilor Scott would like to add note that he's recused from this item, and Councilor Rosetti, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Golden, thank you for your explanation. I am aware of this, I actually listened in on other communities who've adopted it, but I don't understand why we're not going to the full $10,000 as we could. I worry about our small business owners and why the reasoning of $5,000 and not going to the $10,000.
I think under the current... Through you, Mr. President. Under the current circumstances, I think the flexibility is important for the community to be able to increase that amount, much like the residential exemption, and walk to a higher exemption when necessary. We have some large buildings coming online for the first time, and the personal property associated with those buildings would assist us in going to the $7,500 or $10,000 under the statute. I think at a later date, it would be a good time. I did measure the $10,000, and it would be $40,000 in taxes that would be lost if we went to $10,000 versus the $16,900.
Okay, I thank you, Mr. President. I'm just digesting. I appreciate your explanation, I understand a little bit better, but I honestly think, given the size of our budget and $40,000, it's not a huge chunk, and our small businesses are hurting so terribly that I would prefer it to go to the $10,000.
Are you making... Oh, go ahead, Frank.
I would respect the Honorable Counsel's choice, either way.
Mr. President, I won't make an amendment to it at this time, until I hear from my colleagues who've heard me voice that, but if I get, I do strongly feel that $40,000 going to $10,000 would really be a helpful benefit to our small business owners. So if you prefer I put it in the form of a motion for discussion, I will. Your choice, sir.
Well, let's see if there's any further discussion on this item. Here are no further discussions. So you're making a, what is your motion, Councilor? Councilor Strezzo has a question.
Thank you. So what would the timeline look if it... Mr. President, through you to Council Rosetti, what would the timeline look like for a discussion? Because we all know our small businesses are really hurting. What would, what would that look like?
Mr. President, may I respond?
Please do.
Thank you, through you. Mr. Strezzo, I'm looking for a motion this evening. I was looking for discussion this evening. I want to adopt it, if we adopted it, $5,000, so be it, but I prefer $10,000. So at this time, then, given no other one asking for discussion, and we could still have discussion, Mr. Strezzo, but I move to amend the request of the administration under the chapter and section and clause to go to the max of $10,000 on the personal property accounts.
So, oh, go ahead. Is that your motion, though, Councilor Rosetti?
I'm sorry, sir.
You're making that motion right now?
Yes, I did.
Okay. On the motion, Council Strezzo, do you have a comment?
Thank you.
Councilor Ballantyne?
I second the motion.
Council Ballantyne, seconds. Do you have that motion, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, the motion is to increase the exemption amount that the city assessor may go to, up to $10,000.
Is that correct, Councilor Rosetti?
Yes, that the amount be $10,000.
Okay. Councilor Rosetti has made the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm sorry to ask, but I'm, but my understanding is the item before the city council is on the adoption of Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 54, which exempts small property accounts from taxation. I'm not sure that the amount is currently built into that item, and whether it can be or not, I'm just not sure.
So Councilor Rosetti is making a motion in order, a resolution, to support increasing it, is that correct? And then this item would remain the same? Am I understanding that correctly?
Mr. President, you are. The maximum cannot exceed $10,000.
Okay. So Councilor Rosetti makes a motion. No, but what I'm asking, are we amending this decision right now, or is Councilor Rosetti making a motion to change it at a later date? Councilor Rosetti?
Mr. President, the way it was explained to us by Mr. Golden is the reasoning of the law, and then what Somerville was going to do with that law, and he said Somerville was going to go at $5,000. I am not going to vote it at what the chief assessor stated. I prefer to vote it as before us, with the language of going to the maximum limit of $10,000. If we could add that language to the request, if Mr. Golden would accept that language.
Okay. We've got Councilor White on this point, and then Councilor Ballantyne.
I'll yield to Councilor White.
Councilor White? Is there a Councilor White? While we wait for Councilor White, Council Ballantyne?
Yeah, so I looked at the letter, and the letter saying that the Board of Assessors is proposing an exemption limit to $5,000 in value. So that's what they're proposing. So the amendment, the motion is to amend that to $10,000, and I support that motion. So the letter that has come from the Board of Assessors to the mayor needs to be amended, I would think.
On that point, Mr. President, I got my phone service back.
Councilor White?
Thank you. I believe what we are being asked to do from the administration is accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 44, which sets a limit so that it does not exceed $10,000. That is the statute, that's a general law that we are being asked to accept. We have to accept it. Then the question is far as the policy that the chief assessors are going to go, because the approval to accept the act gives the assessors the ability to go up to $10,000. It's within their discretion whether they go to $10,000 or not. Now, maybe we... Is that correct? I would ask the clerk, because the clerk has looked at the general law, or I'd ask Mr. Golden, but I believe that is what the general law provides. So you can't amend the general law, we're just, we're simply accepting it.
I'll yield to the assessor, because I believe you're correct, Councilor White, on the first point, but as to the Board of Assessor, and I believe you're right on that, that the Board of Assessors has the authority to set the amount.
Mr. President?
Please proceed, Frank.
On behalf of the Board of Assessors, as the chairman, we were aware that the Honorable Counsel may want to increase to $5,000 to $10,000, and we're prepared to comply to their wishes.
Okay, there we go. So it sounds like we have a motion from Council Rosetti in order requesting what we just discussed, and then after that, we will vote on the mayor's request. That sound good, Mr. Clerk?
That sounds good, Mr. President. This will be a resolution that the Board of Assessors set the exemption amount at $10,000.
All right. Any discussion on the resolution? Here are no discussion. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
On that motion, Councilor Clingan?
Yes.
Councilor Mbah?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo?
Yes.
Councilor Niedergang?
Yes.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
He's recused.
Oh, thank you very much. Councilor Ewan Campan?
Yes.
Councilor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Councilor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, 10 councils have voted in favor of that item, one is absent. That resolution has been approved.
One is recused, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So on item number 52, do we have a motion on that?
All moved.
Councilor White moves to approve. Any discussion? Here are no discussion, please call the roll.
There's a roll call vote, actually, on item number 51, to adopt that statute in state law. On that item, Councilor Clingan?
Yes.
Councilor Mbah?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo?
Yes.
Councilor Niedergang?
Yes.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Scott recused, Councilor Ewan Campan?
Yes.
Councilor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Councilor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Again, Mr. President, 10 councils have voted in favor, one is recused. That item has now been accepted.
Okay, do we need any further action on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, Council Ballantyne, did you want to take your items out of order? We're all complete with city business or city staff business?
Thank you, Mr. President. No, we can go back to the regular order of business, and when my orders that are on the agenda come up, I will just ask that the late orders be read with the two that appear on the agenda. Thank you.
Very good. Let's return to the regular order of business at 10 o'clock at night.
Mr. President, we moved all the way back to item number nine, which is a resolution submitted by Councilor McLaughlin, supporting an application to create a state-authorized cultural district in East Somerville.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This is a resolution of me supporting East Somerville Main Streets, and Jen Atwood, who's doing a lot of great work, trying to increase the vibrancy of the East Somerville neighborhood. So long and short, I can explain this thoroughly if people wish, but it basically, state-authorized cultural district opens us up to grant opportunities and just recognition of the cultural background of East Somerville. So I strongly support this. I see that. Council Ballantyne and Mbah would like to sign on. Does anyone have any questions? Council Scott would like to sign on. Any questions or discussion? Who else? Council Strezzo and Davis would like to sign on, and Rosetti, and the entire board. Thank you so much for your support. All right, we'll lay this one on the table and pick it up for a vote later.
Very good. And number 10 is an order submitted by Council McLaughlin, that the Director of S P C D utilize short-term traffic safety measures at the corner of Washington and Tough Streets until the G L X construction is finalized.
This item will be laid on the table with a copy sent to the Director of Traffic and Parking.
And number 11 is an order submitted by Council McLaughlin, the Director of S P C D expand the Safer Streets Initiative to the Ward 1 side of Washington, Myrtle and Mount Vernon Streets in Assembly Row to increase pedestrian safety and reduce through traffic.
All right. I've been waiting all night to get on my high horse about this one. So I was a late convert to the Safer Streets Initiative, mostly because I was consumed with addressing coronavirus issues in the community for a lot of people who have been disproportionately impacted by that. But we were fortunate to get the Safe Street Initiative in East Somerville, and there's two thoughts I had when they added it to Glen Street, as well as Jake Street. One was I was really incredibly underwhelmed by it. I was kind of like, what is the big deal? But then the other part of me was like, if this isn't such a big deal, why can't we have it everywhere? And, you know, I would have really loved to have a "No Through Street" sign at the bottom of Myrtle Street during G L X construction, which is basically essentially what the Safer Streets is, as well as other signs. But I think Myrtle Street is a street that I always get calls on, Mount Vernon Street that I live on. This isn't for me personally, it's because neighbors have talked to me for years about traffic cutting through that street. Assembly Row, that grid area, you could easily shut that down and have a walkable neighborhood. And I would love, I'm trying to address traffic mitigation on Washington Street, which I was hoping to get done before the Washington Street Bridge opened. That bridge is open, thankfully, but I wish this happened before, and I would just lay this one, unless anyone has any comments, I'll lay this on the table and have a copy sent to the Director of S P C D. So you know discussion, the item is laid on the table.
Next item is item number 16, which is a resolution submitted by Councilor Mbah, and McLaughlin, and White. I believe that the administration reassesses its hiring policies to include people of color in leadership positions, and update this council on efforts to promote equity across all departments.
On the item, Councilor Mbah?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I don't need to, I mean, we politicians would like to pontificate a lot, but this is self-explanatory. If you were, you know, individual, you would hear it loud and clear, you know, about how city government doesn't reflect the community. Thank you, Mr. President.
On the item, Councilor Clingan, Council Ballantyne and Davis would like to sign on, and Council Clingan?
Yeah, I would also like to sign on to this order, and, you know, it just got me thinking, I recently had been thinking about just how we can make the hiring process a little more transparent. I think that oftentimes, many jobs, not just the high-profile ones, but I think many jobs are kind of just dealt with in, you know, sort of behind closed doors, and I think even if, you know, we want to talk about diversifying our workforce, I think it has to fall right down into all positions. Maybe that means having some sort of hiring committee, just so we understand when, how and why people, particular people were picked. I know there's certain, like, privacy rules about that stuff, but it's just something I think worth looking into, and this certainly is worth giving some time to think.
Looks like the entire... Looks like the entire council would like to sign on, and Counselor Scott would like to comment, and Counselor Strezzo would like to have a question. Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say this is something that we called for time and again, and, uh, I, I for one am interested in looking for ways that we can make this, uh, in some way binding to, to build in equity to our hiring process in a more structured way. So, uh, I completely support this. I'm signing on to it, and, uh, I'm ready to do the work to find, find a way to do, to do more to mandate it.
Counselor Strezzo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just had a quick question for Counselor Mbah. You?
Yep, go right ahead.
Right. It is 10:11. Um, I wanted to, uh, ask if you considered adding women to this as well, uh, as the Equity, um, Committee doesn't include that end?
Yes, sure. Uh, may I respond, President?
Yeah, Counselor Mbah.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Counselor Strezzo, for asking that. I mean, uh, Counselor Ballantyne and Counselor Stephanie have submitted even those same, uh, policy. We've, this is just a revision of several other policy and related, uh, item that we've submitted in. So this, they're already like a policy order that talks about women, talks about demographics, even the whole, uh, city, uh, in the entire cities, which was led by C- Counselor Hirsch. So this is, there are already policy item in, in, uh, on...
Right, because women of color also are, uh, missing. We need more in leadership positions as well, including women as well. So, okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, this item will be laid on the table and placed in the Equity Committee. Next item.
Very good. Item number 17, Mr. President, is an order submitted by Counselor Mbah, that the Director of SBCD update this council on the minority-owned business initiative and provide data on the number of businesses that have been helped from being gentrified.
Counselor Mbah.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Uh, I also wouldn't want to delever this. These are ongoing issues, and we also heard it loud and clear from the communities, you know, closest to the pain, you know, voicing out that this is something that it keeps seeing happening time and again. So it would be good for us to have data and know what the city is doing about this.
Any further discussion? Here are no discussion. This item will be laid on the table and placed in the Equity Committee. Next item.
Right. Item number 26 is a resolution submitted by Counselor Ewan Campen, that the administration provide an update on the disparity study regarding racial equity in city spending, which was submitted back on September 12th.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that this be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development for an update.
Any further discussion? Here are none. This item laid on the table and referred to housing and community development.
Item 27 is a resolution submitted by Counselor Ewan Campen, Niedergang, Davis, Strezzo, Ballantyne, Rosetti, and Mbah, that this city support the Stop the Money Pipeline movement by calling on the insurance industry to end its insurance for and investments in fossil fuels.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Mr. President. So one of the key tools that we have to address climate change is to cut off the money, the funding that supports these projects. And as all of you know, the climate activists in Somerville have made Somerville, our city, a leader in the municipal divestment movement. Um, this council, the mayor, have voted repeatedly, over and over again, to divest our pension funds from all fossil fuel companies. Um, and to date, our efforts, uh, have been signed at the State House, um, although we are continuing to push. So this resolution is about opening up a new front in that movement. Um, this is the Stop the Money Pipeline. Um, and the idea is to target the insurance companies who support and invest in fossil fuel corporations. So this resolution is submitted on behalf of a coalition, um, not just, uh, in, in our region, but in cities and states across the country, and in fact internationally. Just a few weeks ago, um, 38 Massachusetts legislators signed on to an open letter to Liberty Mutual, um, Insurance in Boston, um, asking that they immediately, uh, stop insuring and investing in fossil fuel projects. So this resolution tonight is not only for us to go on record in support of the Stop the Money Pipeline, um, but it is also to ask that the city of Somerville take a concrete step to begin, um, affirmatively screening all of the insurance companies that we do business with, to ensure that they do not invest in, uh, fossil fuel projects. And it also asks that our mayor bring this issue to the Metro Mayor's Coalition. Um, under normal circumstances, we'd be hearing from some of the activists who are behind this, but, uh, given that it's 10:15 already and we're, we're still in the first portion of the evening, um, we're going to leave it at that for tonight. Thank you very much.
Uh, Counselor Klingon would like to sign on, and I'll sign on as well. Any further discussion? Here are no discussion. This item is laid on the table to vote for approval later. Next item.
Mr. President, the next item is item number 28, which is an order submitted by Counselor Ewan Campen, that the Commissioner of Public Works replace the public recycling bins at the location specified, uh, inside.
This item would be laid on the table with a copy sent to the Commissioner of Public Works. Is that good, Mr. Counselor Ewan Campen?
Mr. President, I just want to note, uh, this was brought to my attention by a number of residents. It is, it is very odd. A, a number of public recycling bins, uh, in Ward Three have been just removed. I, I don't know what's going on. Um, so I would ask, not only that these be replaced, but I would also ask all of my colleagues to take a look at your wards and see if this is going on there as well. Thank you.
All right. Uh, the next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 29 is an order submitted by Counselor Ewan Campen, that this council's Special Committee on Rodent Issues discuss, uh, discuss ways for renters to address rodent issues at their residences without fear of retribution from their landlords.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
I ask that this be referred to the Special Committee on Rodent Issues.
Counselor Klingon would like to sign on. I'll sign on. Counselor Davis. Um, and this item will be laid on the table and sent to the Rodent Committee. Counselor Strezzo.
Very good.
Mbah. The entire board would like to sign on to this bold rodent, uh, effort.
Mr. President, item number 31 is an order submitted by Counselor Ballantyne and Counselor McLaughlin, that the Director of Finance submit to this council by June 17th an updated fiscal year 21 capital projects plan, taking into account the administration's freeze on all capital projects during the COVID-19 health emergency.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I think it's pretty explanatory, but as we're, um, moving into the budget season, uh, we should have a clear picture of, uh, how the administration plans to move forward on capital projects. If this could be referred to finance, please.
Any further discussion? Here are no discussion. The item is laid on the table and referred to finance.
Item 32 is an order submitted by Counselor Ballantyne, Scott, and McLaughlin, that the Director of Finance submit to this council a list of all anticipated new and renewing contracts to be signed in July.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I put this order forward because in the Finance Committee, uh, we were advised that, um, uh, one of the major reasons that the administration wouldn't want to do a 1/12 budget is because of contracts that need to be signed. So, uh, that was when we thought we would be getting the budget earlier, but since we found out recently, we are not going to see the budget until the 19th, and we're all going to work really diligently, but there might be a chance that we, uh, uh, or a good chance that we'll be working into July. Um, I think it's important to understand, uh, what those contracts are in particular, uh, because we'll have to go, there's a good potential that we'll have to go to a 1/12 budget. This could also be referred to finance. I'd appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Here are none. The item is laid on the table and referred to finance. Next item.
Uh, number 33 is a...
Mr. President, may I take my two late orders out of order?
Sure. Uh, what are your, uh, seen, well, does anyone have any objection to Counselor Ballantyne taking the items out of order? Here are none. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please read the two late orders.
First is an order submitted by Counselor Ballantyne, that the Director of Finance and the Director of Budgeting update and submit the 10-year budget forecast in preparation for the fiscal year 21 budget review.
And the other one?
The other one is...
If I just say on the first one, Mr. President, it's self-explanatory, and if that could also be referred to finance, I'd appreciate it.
The item is laid on the table and referred to finance.
And the next one is a resolution submitted by Counselor Ballantyne, that the administration move away from a policy to turn all parks and recreation programming to co-ed programming and equitably and equally invest in girls' programming.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Um, thank you. So, um, this, uh, topic was brought up in finance, uh, last week. I mentioned that I didn't think it was, uh, a very good policy. I wanted to put an order in because, uh, this, this type of policy is outdated and against any progressive policies on gender equity. Um, uh, so, uh, and just for, it, it seems to me that it's going to be used, uh, going to a co-ed model, would be used, uh, in an attempt to try to make an equitable, uh, economic model, uh, work out. And, uh, that's not the way to do it. So I just wanted to make sure that I had a, an order, uh, uh, on the record that I'm opposed to anything like that. Thank you.
Counselor Strezzo would like to sign on. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll lay this on the table. You don't want this to go to committee? The item is laid on the table.
No, thank you. Um, this, it could come up when we get to the budgets, but we can take it on then. But I just, get the record out there. Thank you.
Very good. The item is laid on the table. Next item.
Item number 33 is a resolution submitted by Counselor Niedergang, that the administration provide this council with an updated list of all home rule petitions before the state legislature and a brief summary of their status.
This item is laid on the table.
Brings us, Mr. President, to an item of unfinished business. That is item number 34, which is a resolution submitted by City Councilor Scott.
This item will remain laid on the table. No vote taken.
Very good. We move then up to item number 43, which is reported committee on finance, which met on June 1st.
All right. It's 10:30, ladies and gentlemen. It's up to you to see how long you want to make these committee reports last. Uh, why don't we read the next two finance committee reports too, Mr. Clerk, so we can roll them all off together?
Certainly, Mr. President. Item number 44 is reported committee on finance, which met on June 4th, and item 45 is reported committee on finance, which met as committee the whole on June 10th.
Counselor Scott.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to congratulate the 17 members of the public still watching this meeting. Your stamina is admirable. Uh, the Finance Committee met on June 1st for 35 minutes, uh, after the Public Health and Public Safety Meeting. It was, uh, all members were in attendance. It was a short meeting, uh, mostly to discuss timelines and, um, logistic, logistical, uh, issues relating to, uh, the impending budget presentation, which everybody here in the city council was, uh, brought up to date on in our most recent, uh, meeting of the committee as a whole. Uh, so I'll just, uh, put that aside for now. No substantive members, uh, no updates from the mayor, uh, no members of city staff really were present. So, uh, on June 4th, we met again, this time joined by members of the administration. Uh, there, the bulk of this meeting was a discussion about water and sewer rates. These water and sewer rates were proposed as a bit of a surprise. Uh, we had previously been informed that there would be no proposed increase in the water and sewer rates this year. Instead, we met with a combined increase of about 4%. Um, so this underwent some discussion. There was a public hearing held tonight at 6:00 PM. I attended that public hearing. There were three members of the public there, none of whom elected to actually speak. Um, and so I provided some public comment based on phone calls that I got today about this increase. Um, this item is still in committee and will need to be, uh, recommended, uh, one way or another for approval or to decline it. And I anticipate we'll take that up at a near, very near future, uh, Finance Committee meeting. Uh, the rationale presented by the city on this is that there are still major outstanding, uh, infrastructure efforts, and that they believe that, uh, not going with a seven and a half and two and a half percent increase on, uh, sewer and water respectively would, uh, impinge our stabilization funds and the enterprise funds too much. Uh, item's still open for discussion. We had also some discussion about equity in spending programs, uh, between gendered programs and the rec department, uh, as well as high school varsity and sports activities. It was a spirited discussion. I encourage people to watch it. Uh, there was then, uh, subsequently, uh, a fair amount of conversation, uh, about the budget, um, with Mr. Master Bonin and, uh, with Director Connor speaking on behalf of the mayor. Uh, we also read several of the public comments that had come in, which we perceive much more about, uh, in relation to the police budget and other spending priorities. Uh, so, uh, at that time, we identified that, uh, we would have some preliminary numbers available to us, uh, by the next week. And so it was resolved that we would go ahead and, uh, have a follow-up meeting to get acquainted with the, uh, new budget presentation system that is now online, that any member of the public can access, uh, which brings us to, that was a two-hour meeting, uh, which brings us to the meeting of June 10th, just last night. Uh, this was a meeting of the committee as a whole, and it, uh, all members were present. This was basically the training session on our new system, uh, at SomervilleMaopengov.com/tr transparency. This is the tool by which any member of the public or members of the city council can take a look at the budget in an interactive online fashion. Uh, it has much of the information we're used to seeing in our PDF format of the budget, but, uh, one thing it still lacks is any employee or position listings and the customary kind of page eight, uh, information about summaries of revenues and, uh, summaries of expenditures. It also currently lacks any school committee or, uh, school department budget information, because that hasn't been made official yet or voted on by, by the school department. Um, so anybody who is curious about the preliminary proposal from the mayor, it is online right now. So, uh, it's something that we, we got to walk through. If anybody missed this meeting or is just curious about how to traverse the city's budget information, uh, I highly recommend it. It was a fairly brief tutorial, uh, with some good in-depth discussion. Uh, after that, there was some conversation further about the logistics of budget season. Just to let everybody in the public know, uh, the city council is anticipating to receive the budget on June 19th. That is a Friday, a special committee or a special meeting of the city council, at which point, uh, we will have a very limited number of days, uh, during which we can have meetings to review it. Uh, the possible, maybe likely eventuality that this budget review would extend into July makes it incumbent upon the administration, particularly the mayor, propose a 1/12 month, like a one-month continuing budget that would allow city services to continue while the city council continues to review and deliberate and, uh, perform our, our role as legislative scrutiny on the city's spending. Uh, if the administration fails to do so, then that would lead to, say, garbage collection stopping on July 1. Nobody wants to see that, so, uh, many, many members of the committee and the council at large... at large urged the mayor and the administration in general to prepare that 1/12 continuing budget. We had a lot of good conversation about how to proceed. The plan is still to proceed as best as possible with, uh, committee-only meetings to review as much of the information as possible, and we will work with all possible efficiency and speed, uh, to review this budget. Um, but it is clear that this is an important budget season. There is a great deal of scrutiny, and, uh, we still don't know what we're gonna get. So it's going to take the time it will take. It can take up to 45 days by law, although nobody wants it to go that long. Uh, with that said, uh, we left with some general guidance of how we're gonna go. There was also some discussion of, uh, memo sent by the administration on, um, public hearings. It is our intention at this point to hold a public hearing on June 24th for the budget, which should give people over the weekend and the Monday and Tuesday of the next week to review the numbers once it's available on PDF and hard copy. Uh, I am hoping that the Communications Department will be putting out information as soon as the budget is available, and will be putting out information so that people can find and use this online tool. Uh, I encourage all of my colleagues to publicize the online tool and, uh, the public hearing, um, to all of your email lists and everything as soon as, as soon as we can. Uh, with that said, there were no actions on these items, I believe, at any of these meetings. I believe all items were kept in committee at all three. And with that, I would like to ask that the committee reports be accepted as presented.
Council Scott moves to accept the committee reports as submitted. Any discussion? See no discussion, these items will be laid on the table. Uh, we'll take a vote when we're done with the other committee reports. Just so people know, I scheduled that special meeting, uh, for next Friday at 6:00 PM. It was the time that worked the most for everybody. Uh, next item.
Item number 46 is a report of the Committee on Housing and Community Development, which met on June 3rd.
Council Strazza, your inaugural committee report.
My eyes are getting a little dry, um, so I'm going to try not to blink too much. All right. I'll try to make this as brief but as informative as possible. So we met on Ju- uh, June 3rd. We had, uh, all members in attendance and also Annie Connor from the mayor's office, George Proakis, Kelly Donato from OSPCD, uh, Michael Filoni as well, uh, and Ellen Schacter from, uh, OSPCD. It was held virtually, and we, uh, we discussed the, uh, future of the Little Sisters of the, the Poor Facility. Ms. Connor stated that the property is being purchased by the Visiting Nurses Association. Mr. Proakis stated that there have, uh, there's been a good relationship, or it's gonna be a good relationship or good match, uh, with the VNA and Little Sisters of the Poor because VNA, he said, is committed, committed and successful partner and has the capacity to manage different types of senior properties. And they'll maintain the existing property as is. Councilor Ewan Campan, uh, asked about open green space on this site, if, if it's a possibility, and Mr. Proakis leaves this agreement, uh, will continue in good faith, and he'll look into open, an open space option for that, that facility. We talked about, um, the administration establishing a widely advertised fair housing enforcement program that tests for illegal housing discrimination. Uh, and we talked about, uh, how federal housing, fair housing laws makes it illegal to discriminate, to rent, uh, to, to discriminate against families with children. Uh, and there are testers from Suffolk University that have a program with the, the law, with the law, uh, program, and that, uh, they, they have been out testing their volunteers. The, uh, and, and they're generally testing for Section 8 discrimination, uh, ability to pay discrimination, uh, and that they've, uh, Mr. Filoni stated that Suffolk has secured funds from the Federal Department of Housing or HUD, uh, to, to conduct the testing program, and, uh, the chair, that was me, asked if there was an opportunity to expand their pro- program for more testers. There was a previous recruitment for testers in 2019, and, um, so we're gonna keep that in committee. We talked about rent control and what that looks like in the COVID-19 pandemic, and we, as, as we know that, that renters are, were, uh, in trouble before COVID shutdown, and now it is threefold beyond, and this is a good environment. This is a, a good environment for, um, well, uh, exploitation and possibility for that or, or not. There was a, a member of the community whose, um, building was sold in 2019 without any prior notice of the tenants who spoke. She spoke at the committee, uh, the, and her new landlord was, uh, uh, increased the rents from $300 to $500. The owners were unwilling to negotiate and advised her that she could get a roommate or move. This is, of course, during a pandemic. We, uh, then, uh, let's see, we talked about, uh, Ms. Ms. Schacter talked about a, a bill that's in the state house that will lift the statewide ban on rent control and allow municipalities that choose to do so to enact tenant protections in their own communities. I'm sure you're all aware of this. Uh, the bill received a favorable recognition that day by the Housing Committee, Committee, and it's, it's moved on. Rep. Connolly wrote a letter in support of it and, and provided it to our committee. Uh, we talked about, uh, Ewan Camp, uh, Council Ewan Campan brought up the homeroom petition that would give tenants the ti- uh, at the time of selling property, the legal ability to purchase the building or work with a nonprofit to purchase the building. And he stated that landlords are required by law to notify tenants if buildings are being sold. Uh, we talked about the effectiveness of the Tenant Notification Act, and this is coming, this is timely because, um, Ms. Schacter stated that there was an outreach to landlords, attorneys, constables, immigrant community, and, and training, uh, training available to tenants. The citywide mailing would cost $15,000, and, uh, and it was not in the budget at the time. She had a meeting with ISD and 311 to discuss provisions and mailings, um, and she said that no one should be buying property without knowing about this bill. So, uh, the eviction moratorium ends, uh, August 18th, or 45 days from the statewide emergency declaration, and Ms. Schacter would like to send out a mailing toward the end of July, uh, with, or with the tax bill in August. And, uh, Mr. Proakis, Proakis suggested sending it before the moratorium expires, and they're gonna brainstorm and bring more information to the next committee. So then we talked about the, uh, we coupled the Affordable Housing Universal Waitlist Plan, and, uh, and, uh, we talked about the fact, uh, Mr. Filoni mentioned that the next large rental opportunity will be Block 8, uh, for, um, let's see, and that, and that will be an assembly. Fritz still, still projects that it will be in time for early 2021. And lastly, yeah, and then we talked about the universal waitlist. The next meeting of the Housing and Community Development Meeting will be on, um, June 3rd, which is a Wednesday at 6:00 PM. It'll be virtual. Thank you very much.
Uh, so Council Strazza, you would like to accept the committee, committee report as submitted?
I would like to accept the committee report as submitted, please.
Very good. Council Strazza moves to accept the committee report as submitted. Any discussion? Here and no discussion, the item will be laid on the table, uh, for a vote out later. Next item.
Item number 47 is a report of the Committee on Land Use, which met on June 2nd.
Council Ewan Campan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I'm not gonna go over the content of the meeting, but I am going to, uh, uh, make an announcement to, to my colleagues. Uh, this meeting included the presentation of the administration's first draft at an affordable housing overlay district. This is the very beginning of these discussions, and I want to just draw all of your attention to the existence of this draft, um, which you can find on SomervilleZoning.com under the recent presentations down at the bottom of the page. Dan gave an overview of kind of the concepts, um, that they're looking at, and I, I just wanna emphasize that this is, it's a, it's a little bit complicated and it's a little bit nuanced, um, so I really implore everyone to, to watch the committee, the, the video if possible, um, and to look through Dan's presentation, because right now where we're at is, uh, going out to members of the community, to people that, uh, whose, whose input we really value, and start, starting to form our own feedback, um, at, at a, at a future date, once the, the committee and the council has had a chance to provide a lot of that feedback, then we're going to have a, a larger community process around this, once we have something that we feel is ready for kind of large-scale public digestion. So I would just encourage you to visit SomervilleZoning.com when you get the chance to look over this, which I think is a, um, it, it's going to lead us in a very, um, important, um, direction to make it easier to build more affordable housing in Somerville. And with that, the, the committee report is very accurate, the minutes, and the video is online. Thank you.
Council Ewan Campan moves to accept the committee report as submitted. Any discussion? Here and no discussion, the item is laid on the table. Next item.
Item 48, a report of committee on Legislative Matters, which met on June 4th.
All right, before we get into that, I'm gonna step down and recuse myself, and Councilor Rosetti's gonna take over. Uh, as the president, I am acting mayor. I'm acting mayor on marijuana, and that is why I'm recusing myself. So Council Rosetti, you are the president.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I will now, uh, put it over to Councilor Davis, Chair of Legislative Matters.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the Committee on Legislative Matters, uh, did meet on, uh, the aforementioned date, which is now not on my screen anymore. Sorry about that. June 4th. We met on June 4th. Everyone was there. Um, we discussed, uh, a, a number of items, uh, one of which was the, um, formation of an ordinance formally recognizing domestic partnerships. And I mentioned this specifically because it was, it was the first draft that we'd seen. It was based on ordinance from Cambridge and Boston, but those ordinance, uh, predated the Marriage Equity rulings, and so, uh, they were more extensive. Um, this ordinance would require that the, um, the domestic partners indicate their address, and it would also require that they, they inform the city if an address changes. So that was a particular part, a piece that, uh, you know, we asked about, the, the, you know, the rationale was that, uh, one of the, one of the requirements is that, is that the, the partners reside together. Um, and so I would ask anyone who's interested and who still happens to be, uh, paying attention at, at 10:45, or perhaps looks this up later, uh, to, uh, go take a look at the draft. It is available on the city council website through the agenda, through this agenda item, and, uh, let us know if you have some concerns or, or if we got anything wrong. I wanted to make sure we didn't take any action, like I said, I wanted to make sure that folks knew it was out there and just had a chance to put, to lay eyeballs on it that may have, um, a different perspective than we all had, uh, or, or, you know, expanded pers- perspective. So I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. The only other, uh, only other item that I wanted to raise specifically is, are the two items actually that, that relate to the, uh, the adult-use marijuana ordinance. Um, I will note that President McLaughlin, as the acting mayor on marijuana policy, uh, was accused from all discussion and votes on these items. Um, we did, so this was the, the second or third time we've taken up these items. Assistant Senator Shapiro, uh, provided some revisions based on our prior conversation. Um, Council McLaughlin, uh, sorry, Council Niedergang actually, um, proposed an additional, uh, revision, which, uh, we all thought was well, uh, well-informed, and so we, we took votes within committee to, um, to approve or, or to, you know, agree to the proposals, to the changes. It was pointed out by the clerk that because the specific items before us were for discussion rather than ha- than, than actually having the ordinance formally before us, that we couldn't, um, move to approve or to recommend approval. So both of those items were marked, were completed, and, uh, following the, um, following my report, I would like to take up item 68 out of order. Uh, we don't have to, uh, we don't have to, you know, do anything with it, with the report because, as I said, these items were just, uh, were completed. So we have a, a separately submitted draft, uh, of, of, um, the amended ordinance, uh, with amendments in, marks, uh, consistent with what the committee, uh, voted to, would have voted to approve had we had the procedural ability to do so, but, um, you know, conceptually approved within, uh, within the committee meeting. So that'll be the next item. And, uh, otherwise, the minutes are, uh, have detail on the other items we discussed. If, uh, folks have any, uh, any questions about that, there's, of course, the video in, in the minutes as well. Sorry, I encourage folks to take a look. So with that, I request that the report be accepted as submitted.
On the request of the chair, the motion to accept the Report of Legislative Matters Committee meeting of June 4th as submitted, any discussion?
Yes.
Councilor Ballantyne.
Um, I apologize if you went through this, but I didn't quite, um, catch it. On the, um, uh, marijuana ordinance, could you, um, briefly describe what, I mean, I went through it, but what was the motivation on some of these pieces?
Yeah, sure, sure. Um, I, I was gonna get to that when we bring up the next item, um, but I'm happy to do it now, so the folks looking at these, uh, these minutes have that, that context. So these were two, um, two proposed amendments that were initially, um, raised by Council Niedergang and, uh, ultimately had the support of the committee. Um, one was to, uh, and this is something that many of us have, have been, been talking about for quite a while, was to expand the scope of disclosure that is required. Um, and, and when I say disclosure, it's, it's really more a matter of what the, what the city is disclosing. So applicants have always been required to provide a, a significant amount of information when they, when they submit their application, that the, if anyone's looked at the application form, it's quite extensive. Um, and, uh, they, it, that also includes, uh, specific information required by the Cannabis Control Commission. Um, so what, the, what we did was, was, there was a few sort of steps to it. One was, what was actually specify in our ordinance certain components that we wanted to make sure were required to be, uh, um, provided in case the Cannabis Control Commission should somehow change that in the future. Uh, but more importantly was to make all of that information redacted for, you know, any account, uh, social security numbers, that sort of thing. Um, but ultimately to, to make those applications all available to the public on the council website so that folks can see them. As it is right now, it really, there's really is, uh, like, uh, many of us have said, including myself, a, a real lack of transparency. Um, the applications come in, no one can see them. The, um, the Marijuana Advisory Committee goes through a process that, that no one knows about, has no transparency whatsoever, and, uh, you know, recommendations are spat out at us. And even at that point, um, the, the public couldn't see any detail about the applicants that were, uh, that were, you know, allowed to proceed by the MAC, other than the very basic information unless, unless they submitted a, um, a public records request. Uh, of course, if they, if they submitted a public records request, then, um, that information would be provided, and that had been the case, and I believe each of the three initial, um, applicants that were, uh, that were forwarded along from the MAC. Um, this requires that infor- information to be made public upfront so that we're not, you know, waiting or forcing the public to go through a process so that others who may not know, be aware of that process, uh, have the ability to review, um, all of the details, the ownership interest, uh, you know, economic interests in these applicants, and who they all are, uh, in the interest of transparency, and so that that process can be more, that the public can be, you know, better informed, really at all informed, um, in, in, you know, commenting or participating as, as it goes forward. So that was a, a key point. And then the second point was, um, if you recall, in our, in the initial ordinance, And then the second point was, if you recall, in our, in the initial ordinance, we created sort of two categories for the initial period. And in category A, which is a priority category, we included economic empowerment applicants as that, as they are defined by the, by the state regulations. And we also defined, we also included applicants where, with, where, for, for a Summerville resident. And I, I had actually not been in support of that piece initially. Council Niedergang then recently moved to, to, to make that change, given that two of the three initial applicants that were moved forward were based on their, the Summerville residency rather than economic empowerment applicants. So what we ended up doing was extending the initial four-year, the initial two-year priority period, which would otherwise expire this fall, to four years, and moving Summerville residents into the Priority B category. So they would essentially be in the same category as the existing medical licensees, which would give the economic empowerment applicants sort of the sole priority of, of priority, priority ca, no, sorry, Priority A category. That, those were, that, that's the sort of the, the key components of the, the two changes that were made. There's more detail, I'm happy to answer more questions, but that's the proxy.
Um, thank you, through you, Madam President. To the chair, was there not also a piece about the ownership? Now I can't find it. Where ownership was changed or added, like 10%? Oh, yeah. Persons or entities having direct control. You all made changes to that also, correct?
Yeah, so that, that better clarifies, and if I recall correctly, I don't know if Solicitor Shapiro is, is on the call. If I recall correctly, that is, in large part, or to some extent, was to track the, the state requirements that, that effectively were already part of our ordinance but weren't, weren't stated. And, and the intent here was to, to ordain them as part of the municipal ordinance so that if any of those details changed, we, we would, we would still have that information. And so, as you can see, if, if you look at item, at item 68, and again, you know, this is relevant to, to the next item as well, if anyone's watching this video in the future and, and, you know, looking for a conversation on item 68, this is the same issue that, you know, the, the documented item 68 is the one that we, that we were working on. So i- in response to our initial conversations, the Solicitor's Office added these definitions to add this detail in our ordinance to, to make more clear what, what control means and what indirect control means. And I guess those were the two.
Okay.
The two initial definitions.
I'm going to interrupt. Council Ballantyne, are you satisfied with those explanations?
Yeah, I guess, I, yeah, I'm satisfied. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Counselor Scott.
Uh, yes, Madam, Madam President, I guess through you to the chair, I was just curious, I think these are all great changes. Was anybody from the local activist community brought in to consult on this or to, to help with it? I'm just curious.
These were, I mean, we certainly, I know, I read a, a number of emails and communications that we've had, you know, based on the existing ordinance. I, I would assume the same goes for Council Niedergang, but, you know, so we did not have any, any particip, you know, public, participants from the public in the deliberation process. I know that, as I said, you know, my, my view on this was informed by input from the community, including members of the activist community, but I know there were no formal speakers sponsored to, to discuss this.
Satisfied, Counselor? Scott?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Rosetti.
You're welcome. On the motion to accept the report, is any further discussion? Hearing none, I would ask the clerk to call the roll of the acceptance of the report.
This is a roll call vote on the acceptance of the Legislative Matters Committee report on that item. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor, Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Uh, yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McGlaughlin is recused. Madam President, 10 councils have voted in favor of acceptance of the committee report. One is absent. That committee report has been accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselor Davis moves to take item 68 out of order. On the motion to take up item 68, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, do we need a roll call to take an item out of order?
Not at 10:57 PM, Madam President.
Thank you, sir. Okay. But, Mr. Clerk, one other question. I don't have the same access that my pres, the president has. Is Mr. Shapiro in, in, in the room?
I do not see him as an attendee, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, if you could read item 68.
Item 68 is a communication submitted by the Assistant City Solicitor submitting an amendment to ordinance 2-221 regarding adult-use marijuana establishments as approved by the Legislative Matters Committee on June 4th.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So for my colleagues, after discussion, this will require a motion of ordainment. It has already been enrolled, this is, would be to ordain the amendment. Counselor Davis, Mr. Chair of Legislative Matters, would you like the floor at this time?
Thank you, Madam President. So as discussed under the committee, the report of the Committee on Legislative Matters, this is the actual draft of the proposed amendments, the formal submission. So this, this reflects the, the discussion, the changes that were made as a part, as part of the deliberations, the Committee on Legislative Matters. And the item that is in the minute track shows, track changes. In fact, it shows two levels. The yellow highlight ones were the, the second set from the, the most recent meeting. The prior tracking was from changes that the Solicitor's Office initially made based on our first discussion. They reflect the two proposals that were made by Counselor Niedergang. The first to require transparency, disclosure of the application details, and the second to, to make economic empowerment applicants the sole priority in, in A, to, to remove the priority, that priority from Summerville residents. And I, I would yield to Counselor Niedergang as the maker of those initial motions, if he would like to comment on those.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Niedergang, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. And first, I want to thank Chairman Davis for shepherding it through, and also Assistant Solicitor Shapiro really did excellent work on it. I'm really pleased with this. We also added in some additional requirements for disclosure about ownership of the business, including interests that the property owner might have in the actual marijuana business. And, you know, I think this is an interesting kind of lesson for us in, in that after about a year and a half of an ordinance that, that we passed, which, you know, Counselor Scott, I think, had a leading role in, and which I think we all felt really good about, we realized, well, there's a few things that we need to revise and tighten up and change to make sure that it conforms with our original intent. And I'm, you know, I'm very happy with, with the process and that we were able to do that. Thank you.
You're welcome. So Counselor Davis has moved for ordainment of this item. Is there any further discussion on the motion to ordain? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll on ordainment?
Uh, for a question, Madam President, you, if I may.
Yep.
Thank you. You, you mentioned this earlier, but from my own understanding, and I suppose members of the public, if, if I'm not following the procedure, so why is it that enrollment is not required first before ordainment?
Mr. Clerk, to my understanding, it's already been enrolled. This is a, an amendment or an ordainment. Am I correct?
Uh, through you, Madam President, this is actually a somewhat unusual circumstance in the way that the council normally receives amendments to ordinances that have come out of committee. In this case, the disordinance is being submitted clean tonight. There is no item to sort of substitute it in for as part of the committee report. So acceptance of the committee report did not, in fact, include the first reading of this ordinance, this item number 68. So really, three votes need to happen. The first is to accept item 68. The second is to enroll item 68. And the third is to ordain item 68, i- if the council wants to follow through to ordainment all this evening.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Clerk. So Chairman Davis, what is your wish?
I, well, Madam President, I recognize the late time, but I think in the interest of getting these rules in place so that folks who are looking at the next round know what they are sooner than two weeks, I, if we don't mind going through three rounds of voting, then that'd be my preference, but of course, I'd defer to the will of the body.
Um, I am in agreement with that, sir. So then, Mr. Chairman Davis, do you move to accept item 68, amendment to ordinance 2-221?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Clerk, could you call the roll on the acceptance?
Certainly. This is on the approval or the acceptance of item number 68, the Adult Use Marijuana Establishment Ordinance Amendment. On that item, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McGlaughlin is recused. Madam President, 10 councils have voted in favor. One is absent. That item has now been approved or accepted.
Thank you, sir.
Madam President, please enroll.
Counselor Davis moves for enrollment. On the, on the motion for enrollment, Mr. Clerk.
On, on enrollment, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McGlaughlin is recused. Again, Madam President, 10 councils in favor, one is absent. That item has now been enrolled.
Counselor Davis, you wish to ordain?
Move for ordainment?
Counselor Davis moves to ordai, for ordainment. On the motion for ordainment, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, can you call the roll on the ordainment?
On ordainment, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McGlaughlin is recused. Madam President, 10 councils have voted in favor. One is absent. That item has now been ordained.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Madam President, a procedural question for the clerk.
Yes.
If I may, through you to the clerk, would this be a, a item which would be appropriate to move for reconsideration in hopes that reconsideration fails?
That is certainly an option at any time. What that does is basically void the 48-hour waiting period. It, instead of this item being released from the city council's possession Monday at noon, it would happen immediately.
Okay. I, I'm going to withhold that. I mean, you know, God forbid we screw something up and give folks 48 hours. I don't think there's any, there's not that much urgency on this one. So, thank you, Madam President.
Very welcome, sir. Okay, thank you to the membership. And Mr. Clerk, if we could go back to the regular order of business, and I invite Mr. President back into the room.
Madam President, that brings us to item number 49, which is a report of the Committee on Public Health and Public Safety, which met as a committee the whole on June 1. And I'll go ahead and read item 50, which is a report of the same. Oh, I'm sorry.
Everybody mute yourselves, clerk has the floor.
I was, should I read item 50 as well, the second committee report?
Yes, please.
The, the, also before the council is item number 50, which is a report of the Committee on Public Health and Public Safety, which met as a committee the whole on June 8.
Counselor Klingon, you have the floor. Yes.
Yep. Madam President, as, as Chair of the Committee, maybe I can ask?
I was going back in time to Counselor Klingon's case. My apologies, Mr. Chair of Public Health and Public Safety. You have the floor, Counsel Davis.
Not at all. Thank you very much, Madam President. The Committee on Public Health and Public Safety did meet the past two Mondays. The minutes of these meetings are extensive. The, the process was effectively the same as we've been seeing, with a data set report and then an update from Director Kress. The only thing I will note is that after consulting from a, from a scheduling standpoint with my colleagues, I made the decision to change the weekly meetings to every other week. So there will not be a meeting that's coming Monday, there will be one the following Monday, and we'll reassess after that point. So just a scheduling point. For all our local, our loyal viewers, you'll have to wait two weeks to see us again after, after each meeting from now on. So with that, I would like to move that both reports be accepted as submitted.
Counselor Davis moves to accept the committee reports as submitted. Any discussion? Here are no discussion. Those items are laid on the table. And since those are the last committee reports, let's do a roll call vote on all remaining committee reports.
Mr. President, this then is a roll call vote, according to my scorecard, item numbers nine through 11, 16 and 17, 26 through 29, 31 through 33, 43 through 47, and 49 and 50.
Please call the roll.
On the approval of all those items, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all those items have been approved. 11 votes to none in favor.
All right, are we on item 53 now?
Mr. President, we are on item number 53, which is a request of the mayor.
Counselor, real quick, uh, Mr. Clerk, Counsel Scott would like to waive the readings of items number 53 to 59, as well as 65 and 66, and refer them to the Committee of Finance.
Very good. That brings us to item number 60, which is a-
Would also look to waive the readings of items 60, 61, 63, and 64. Waive the readings and move for approval this evening. These are non-police grants with no new match required, and 62 is already approved. Now, well, you got all that, Mr. Clerk?
So basically, we have referred up to 59 to committee, and we are, there is potentially a motion, or at least there will be a, a vote on acceptance of 60, 61, and 63.
And 64.
Okay, thank you.
So 53 to 59 are in committee, and we'll do a roll call vote for discussion on items 60, 61, 63, and 64. These are all grants with no new match required. These are all grants with no new match required. Any discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Scott moves for approval. Please call the roll.
On approval of those four items, Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mbah?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Counselor Ba, okay, Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all of the councils are in favor. Those four grants have been approved.
All right, next item.
Brings us to item number 65, which is a request, requesting approval of a time-only contract extension for the street resurfacing work with DNR General Contracting Incorporated.
Unless there's any discussion, I'm going to refer this to the Committee of Finance.
Thank you.
This item will be referred to Finance.
Item number 66 is a communication of the mayor requesting approval of the FY '21 expenditure limitations for departmental revolving funds.
This item will be referred to Finance.
Item 67 is a request, requesting confirmation of the appointment of Carla Lilvik as trustee for the Board of Library Trustees.
This item will be referred to confirmation of appointments.
Item 69 is a communication with the Director of Parks and Recreation responding to a board item about the disposition of funds for the boathouse.
All right, any discussion on this? I know this is a favorite of Counsel Ballantyne's.
Um, yeah, if I have, it's no discussion, and if I have any questions, I'll just follow up on it. Thank you.
Very good. The item is placed on file, laid on the table and placed on file.
Very good. Item number 70 is a communication with the Director of Parks and Recreation responding to a board item with the plans to reopen Dilboi Pool and the summer camps this year.
All right, this item will be placed on file, laid on the table, placed on file, with a copy to Public Health and Safety.
Very good. That brings us to new business.
Mr. President?
Counselor White?
I move to waive the readings of items 71 through 77. They're all renewals, and the city clerk has informed me that everything is in order, so I would ask for their approval this evening.
Counselor White moves to waive the readings of items number 71 through 77 and move for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. The approval, the readings are waived, and why don't we do a roll call? Do we have any more? Yeah, we got a few more. Let's do, uh, let's do a roll call vote on these, as well as all remaining items laid on the table.
Very good, Mr. President. That would be a roll call vote on placing items 69 and 70 on file, and then approving the new business items 71 to 77.
Please call the roll.
On that, on those items, Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mbah?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, those, that motion's been approved. The items have been approved or placed on file as appropriate.
Very good. Next item, please.
Brings us to item number 82, which is an order submitted by Counselor White that the Land Use Committee review the proposed amendment to zoning ordinance 15.4.2.3 when developing its own proposal to amend that ordinance.
On the item, Counselor White?
Thank you, Mr. President. At the meeting, at the last meeting, we had a number of councils express concerns over one property where basically items had been inspected and approved but were not in compliance with the special conditions of the, of the special permit. And at that meeting, I had stated that, you know, I would draft an amendment to try to protect, to try to, try to address that problem and for, you know, protect residents from that type of activity happening again. So being a person of my word, except maybe when repaying debts, I drafted a proposal, but instead of submitting it as a proposed zoning ordinance, I'd like it to go to the Land Use Committee so we can take a good look at it, bring the Superintendent Inspection Services, and, and then come up with our, our own proposal after we've already agreed to it and, and, you know, heard folks from the administration, and then send it for publication and then a public hearing with the, with the planning board. So this way, I think, would make it more expeditious for us to address it first in committee. So that's the purpose behind this.
All right. Counselor Davis, Mbah, and Rosetti would like to sign on. Any further discussion? Counselor Ballantyne would like to sign on. Seeing no further discussion, the item is laid on the table and referred to the Committee of Land Use. And Counselor Strezzo would like to sign on.
Very good.
Counselor Scott, waive the readings of items number 83 through 89 and refer them to the Committee of Finance.
Mr. President, um-
Mr. President?
Counselor White?
Thank you. I have to recuse myself on item 88 because I'm a trustee of the Summer Museum.
All right, good. Mr. Clerk, please note that Counselor White is recused.
Very good, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm not aware of any further business before this council this evening. Oh, wait a minute, we have to vote, uh, yeah, we have a final vote.
Vote. Do we need any more roll call votes?
We need, unfortunately, we need roll call votes on items 79, I'm sorry, uh, just 82.
On 82, please call the roll.
It's a roll call vote on the approval of item 82, which was a recommendation the Land Use Committee were preparing ordinance. On that item, Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mbah?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counsel, Counselor Ewan Campan?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils in favor. That order has been approved.
All right. So by my count, we're done early. So does anyone have any demands for equal time, any rants to go on before we end this evening? Hearing none, please call, Counselor Klingon moves to adjourn. Please call the roll for adjournment.
On adjournment, Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mbah?
Yes, please.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo?
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
No. Kidding, kidding. Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin?
The government buys consensus. We'll be here if you vote no. Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor of adjournment.
All right. Everyone, thank you all for your hard work tonight.